And you have a pet, please take one. This is from the Second Chance for Pets Emergency ID Card. It is a super thing and I'm really excited about it. There are two cards on here, which is why they're not all cut and folded and stuff, because I didn't want to lose them. So the first one is for your wallet, preferably near your driver's license. It gives the information about who is going to take care of your pets in case you're in a car accident and can't tell anybody. Or similar occasion, something happens and you can't tell anybody. This will tell them how to take care of your pets. If you're traveling somewhere and they're at home, they're going to need care. This will help them get it. The second one is to be put inside this file of life, which you should have on your refrigerator at home. This is the same information, your name and information, your veterinarian's name, and your emergency pet caregiver's names. So they can be contacted if you're suddenly taken to the hospital and there's nobody to take care of the animals. They'll have this, first responders will have this information and they can take care of it. I know it's important to me and I'm sure it's important to all of you that they be taken care of in the event of any kind of an emergency. So if you didn't get one, they're out front, and if you still can't find one out there, contact me and I'll get you them. If you need more than one, feel free, if you've got sons, daughters, cousins, aunts, uncles, feel free to take them, because that's what they're there for. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Shirley. Thank you, Shirley. Okay. Quorum being present, I call this annual town meeting of the Town of Townsend to order. First order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance, which is going to be led by scouts from Troop 10 Townsend. With us tonight are Christopher Bjornson, Justin Carter, and Alex Dando. Scouts can come forward.
Shirley, how are you?
Oh, okay, thank you.
Couldn't hear you.
Don't be ashamed.
Talking over.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Thank you, scouts. Let's have a hand for the scouts from Troop 10. And a couple of them are able to stay tonight and help with the microphones. So, Mr. Cludier, if you can show them what to do, very good. All right. Couple preliminary things to go over. Probably, you've all heard this many times before, but if there are any visitors here in the hall asking that they sit in the front rows, so we can identify, you certainly may have the opportunity to speak, but you can't vote. I am John Barrett, the Town Moderator. I guess I should say, and I will, thank you for re-electing me for three years. Thanks. To my right, I guess your left, is our Town Clerk, Kathleen Spofford. Also, no, you weren't right now, okay. Board of Selectmen, Susan Lizzio. Wayne Miller. And our Town Administrator, Jim Kreidler. And Town Council, David Jenkins. Also here with us is the Finance Committee, and we have Geraldine Bezikas, Lynn Pinkerton, and Joe Shaka. Again, couple sort of review of some of our procedural rules. Oh, and before I forget, where did he run off to? Uh-huh, he's sitting in the back. But typically, we do appoint a deputy moderator in case something happens to me and we have to carry on. So, Jean, would you mind? I would like, I guess, public acclamation for Jean Rahala to serve as the deputy moderator. You can come down and get sworn in later. Okay. The rules we go by is town meeting time. We also have some sort of practices that we've had in the town, which I'm familiar with, and if there are any questions, I'll make determinations based on town meeting time and our past practices. Please remember to be recognized before you speak. Identify yourself by your name and address, and direct any comments through me, the chair. Once you've been recognized, wait for the microphone, because we're sending back the feed on cable to the folks at home. And just like to mention that this is being recorded and sent via the cable TV to the folks at home. All motions must be in writing and brought to the chair. If a matter is finally voted, it may be reconsidered upon a majority vote if the motion's made this evening. If the meeting goes to a second night, an article which has been voted on tonight may be reconsidered upon a nine-tenths vote. If a vote tally is questioned by seven people, the counters will be brought forward to take an actual count. If you're confused about the situation on the floor, we'll try to straighten out any questions brought up. If you wish to raise a point of order, please stand in place and state that you wish to raise a point of order, and you may interrupt the speaker to do that, but then wait to be recognized. If you wish to raise a point of privilege, like you can't hear the speaker, or there's some physical problem affecting your ability to hear what's going on, you can rise and make a point of privilege. One other motion you may hear is a motion to move the question. This is a motion that cuts off debate, and is not debatable. However, our practice has been that one cannot rise to debate a motion and then move the question, thereby getting the last word. To move the question, it must be first recognized to speak, and you may not interrupt the speaker. Also, a motion to move the question, if there has been insufficient discussion and there appear to be many questions, will be deemed out of order. If the questions and answers become redundant, a motion to move the question will be in order. I'm going to caution everyone to be courteous and polite, and let's get the town's business done, not engage in any personalities, but remember we're the, I think, the oldest existing form of open democracy in the world. So you're heirs to a great tradition, and let's try to keep that tradition going. Yeah, I think that's everything. Next, we need the return of the warrant for the annual town meeting. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mrs. Moderator. Pursuant to the within warrant, I have notified and warned the inhabitants of the Town of Townsend by posting up attested copies of the same at Memorial Hall, 272 Main Street at the center, West Townsend Fire Station, 460 Main Street in West Townsend, Police Communications Center, 70 Brookline Road, North Middlesex Regional High School, 19 Main Street, and Harbor Church, 80 Main Street, at least seven days before the date of the meeting as within directed. Constable of the Town of Townsend, Michelle Doold.
Thank you. All right, so we have, I think I already declared it open, but I'll do it again. All right, declare the annual town meeting open. Is there a motion to adjourn? I know I catch some of you unfamiliar with our practice with that. Typically, we will adjourn the annual town meeting and move to go into the special town meeting, which is something that's a catch-all to catch things that couldn't get on the warrant in time for the annual town meeting usually. So that's our practice, and looking to see if someone can make that motion. Mr. Miller?
Mr. Moderator, I move that we adjourn the annual town meeting and reconvene in the special town meeting.
And reconvene in the annual town meeting after the special town meeting is concluded?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to adjourn the annual town meeting to reconvene after the special town meeting. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Okay, it's, the ayes have it. And now we will hear the warrant for the special town meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Pursuant to the within warrant, I have notified and warned the inhabitants of the Town of Townsend by posting up attested copies of the same at Memorial Hall, 272 Main Street at the center, West Townsend Fire Station, 460 Main Street in West Townsend, Police Communications Center, 70 Brookline Road, North Middlesex Regional High School, 19 Main Street, and Harbor Church, 80 Main Street, at least 14 days before the date of the meeting as within directed. Constable of the Town of Townsend, Michelle Doold.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. I declare the special town meeting open. First article is to see if the town will vote to borrow or transfer from available funds in the treasury the sum to be inserted for the purpose of paying prior fiscal year bills or take any other action in relation thereto. Is there a motion? Mr. Miller?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to take no action.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion? Any explanation?
No bills.
No bills? Okay, it's a catch-all one, and we don't have to do it, so very good. All those in favor then of taking no action, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The ayes have it, unanimous. Article two, to see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds in the treasury the sum of, to be inserted, for the purpose of offsetting fiscal year 18 snow and ice deficits under the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 31D, or take any other action in relation thereto. Is there a motion? Ms. Lizzio?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $152,307. That's 1, 523,000.71 for the purpose of offsetting FY18 snow and ice deficits under the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 40, Section 31D.
Okay, motion's been made?
Second.
And seconded? All right, is there anything to be said? I don't see any hands, fairly routine, I think everybody knows what snow and ice is this year. All right, I think we're ready to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The ayes have it, unanimous. To see if the town, Article three, to see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum to be inserted for the purchase and implementation of a new utility billing software for the water department and take any other related expenses, and, I'm sorry, and any other related expenses, set appropriation to be paid from Water Enterprise Fund revenues, or take any other action in relation thereto. Is there a motion? Mr. Madala, can we get a microphone?
I move that the town vote to transfer from Water Enterprise retained earnings the sum of $18,000 for the purchase and implementation of new utility billing software for the water department and any other related expenses.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Any, Mr. Stevenson?
Just wondering why this isn't on annual.
Sorry, Mr. Stevenson, I know who you are, but could you identify yourself for the --
Warren Stevenson, 11 Willow Drive. I was just wondering why this is on a special, not on annual town meeting.
Okay, question comes on the motion as to why this is on the special, not on the annual. Any, Mr. Madala, any, or Mr. Raffius?
Mr. Moderator?
Yeah.
Just very briefly, this is one of the articles that the Board of Water Commissioners sent in a little bit after the March 1st bylaw deadline for the annual town meeting. So it came in in time for the special, but not for the annual, that's why it appears here.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Mr. Kreidler. All right, is there any other questions, comments? Not seeing any, I think we're ready to vote. All those in favor of the motion on Article three, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The ayes have it. All right, that seems to conclude the special town meeting warrant. Motion dissolve the special town meeting?
Move to dissolve the special town meeting.
All right. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Okay. We are reconvened in the annual town meeting. And the first article is to see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to appoint all town officers unless other provisions are made by Massachusetts General Law, by town charter, by the vote of the town, or take any other action in relation thereto. Is there a motion? Mr. Miller?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to appoint all town officers unless other provisions are made by the Massachusetts General Law, by town charter, or by vote of the town.
Okay, motion's made and seconded, fairly stock article. Any questions, comments? Looks like we're ready to vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The ayes have it, unanimous. Article two, to see if the town will vote to hear reports of any committees, boards, commissions, et cetera, or take any other action in relation thereto. Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator?
Ms. Lizzio?
I move that the town vote to hear reports of any committees, boards, or commissions.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The ayes have it. Unanimous. Do we have any reports?
The annual report is available outside.
Oh, okay. Mr. Kreidler advises that the annual report of all the departments is outside in the lobby. So unless you want to hear those reports written, I guess we'll move on to the next Article three, to see if the town will vote to choose a committee of three West Townsend residents to serve as members of the James H. Tucker Fund in accordance with the bequest for the sole purpose to keep the curbing, gravestones, and monuments in good order or take any other action in relation thereto. Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator?
Yeah, Mr. Miller, sorry.
I move that the town vote to choose a committee of three West Townsend residents to serve as members of the James H. Tucker Fund in accordance with the bequest for the sole purpose to keep the curbing, gravestones, and monuments in good order.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Thought I saw her here, but usually we will have the names of the people in the motion. Oh, there you are. Okay. Ms. Hayman?
Go ahead, just get very close. All right, I've got to recognize Pam Hayman. Go ahead, just get very close. Sorry about that. I moved that the town appoint Pamela Hayman, Kenneth Gurken, Michael Marshand, all residents of West Townsend to the James H. Tucker Fund.
You got it, you got it. Nobody can hear you, you're getting it really close.
No, he doesn't.
Talk really into it. You can do it.
Okay, I'll try it again.
You can do it.
Sorry about that, it's not set up for one of these gadgets.
Step up and bring to the mic, you can get right close to it.
Okay. I moved, is that right? Yeah. Okay, I moved that the town appoint Pamela Hayman, Kenneth Gurken, Michael Marshand, all residents of West Townsend to the James Tucker Fund in accordance with the bequest. Amen.
Can someone who heard her better tell me who the first two names were, because I couldn't quite hear her? Ken Gurken?
Pam.
And Pam Hayman, okay.
She's bringing it in.
And Michael Marshand. Kind of a point of order? What I think we could do is maybe a friendly amendment, Mr. Miller, to your motion to include those names? Yep, the names are Ken Gurken, Pam Hayman, and Michael Marshand.
Mr. Moderator, point of order?
Madam Clerk, your point of order?
Michael Marshand is a registered voter in the center of the Town of Townsend.
Uh-huh, okay. Michael, what'd you do? I'm glad you moved to the center, because that's the best part of town. But that being the case, another member of the West Townsend village willing to serve? You already are. Have you got a name?
I'm Ken Gurken. I want to represent you.
Herc Fortin? I think Herc would qualify. Hold on, Herc. Could you get a phone, a microphone, please?
Well, thank you for thinking of me, Kent, but I have to admit, I'm getting older, my memory is going downhill fast, I can't hardly remember my wife's name. So, you understand, I think, Kent, that I wouldn't be good for meetings. So, thank you.
All right, thank you, Herc. Folks, I'm sorry, over there, there's a hand up, looking for any other volunteers?
Lisa Lewin, 3 Wyman Road, I'd be happy to.
All right, Ms. Lewin? So accept another friendly amendment to the motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move to amend my motion to include Ken Gurken, Pam Hayman, and Lisa Lewin.
Okay, the motion has been made and amended and amended. Is there anything? This is all friendly amendments, so we won't vote on all of those. Anything further? Okay, all those in favor of the motion as amended to name Ken Gurken, Pam Hayman, and Lisa Lewin as members of the James H. Tucker Fund Committee, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. All right, the ayes have it, unanimous. Thank you, everyone. Article four, to see if the town will vote pursuant to the provisions of General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53E and a half, as most recently amended, to amend Chapter 104, Section 104-1F of the general bylaws by inserting the following text. And you can see in the warrant, I'll just briefly read it, the number nine, police chief in North Middlesex Regional School District receipts, and the school resource officer would be the use of the funds. Number 10 would be the conservation, and the authority to spend would be Conservation Commission, the revenue source would be forest cutting proceeds, and the purpose of the use of the funds would be conservation purposes. 11 would be fire EMS, it would be authorized by the fire EMS chief.
Yes.
Revenue source would be hazardous material supplies reimbursement, and it would be used for hazardous material supply replacement. That's part of the motion. And the next part is to vote to set the following expenditure limits for each revolving fund for the fiscal year 2019. With the meeting's consent, I will not read all those, they are as shown on the warrant. And does anyone object to not reading the warrant article here? Okay. So, now I'll ask for a motion. Go ahead, Ms. Lizzio.
I move that the town vote pursuant to the provisions of General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53E and a half, as most recently amended, to amend Chapter 104, Section 104-1F of the general bylaws by inserting the following text. Nine would be police, change to police chief, is that what, no, authority is police chief, North Middlesex Regional School District receipts, and school resource officer. Number 10, conservation, Conservation Commission, forest cutting proceeds, and conservation purposes. 11, fire EMS, by the fire EMS chief, hazardous materials supplies reimbursement, and the hazardous materials supplies replacement. And to vote to set the following expenditure limits for each revolving fund for fiscal year 2019. Revolving Fund 1, recycling, authority, Board of Health, revenue source, collection of recyclables, use of funds for the operating costs associated with recycling, the spending limit would be $20,000. Number 2, recreation programs, Recreation Commission is the authority, recreation programs, other sources, operating costs associated with program is for the use of the funds, and the amount is $52,000, that's the spending limit. Number 3, facilities maintenance is the fund, facilities coordinator is the authority, fees from the meeting hall rental are the revenue sources, operating and capital costs for cemeteries is the use, and $28,000 is the spending limit. I did? I jumped to cemetery, I'm sorry. I'm glad you're reading. I was just checking to make sure. Okay, facilities is operating costs of the meeting hall and $4,000 is the limit. Number 4, cemetery, authority is Cemetery and Parks Commission, revenue source are fees from burials, use of funds is operating and capital costs for cemeteries, and the spending limit is $28,000. Number 5, revolving fund is fire alarm, authority is the fire chief, revenue source are fire alarm fees, use of funds, operating and capital costs for the fire alarm system, and the spending limit is $4,000. Number 6 is the animal care program, under the authority of the animal control officer, revenue source are fees for emergency care for animals, use of funds is expenses for injured or abandoned animals, and that spending limit is $1,000. Number 7, inspectional services, authority -- Number seven, inspectional services, authority is the building commissioner, revenue source are fees from North Middlesex Regional High School project, I believe I should say building Expenses for inspections regarding the North Middlesex Regional High School building project. And the limit is $75,000. Number eight, fire EMS, fire chief, the revenue source are fees from community events, fire watch, use of funds, expenses associated with fire EMS services, and the spending limit is $5,000. Number nine, the police revolving fund, the police chief is the authority, North Middlesex Regional School District receipts are the revenue source, school resource officer is the use of the fund, and $80,000 is the spending limit. Number ten, conservation is the fund, Conservation Commission are the authority, forest cutting proceeds is the revenue source, conservation purposes is the use for those funds, and $20,000 is the spending limit. Number eleven is fire EMS fund, authorized person is the fire EMS chief, hazardous material supplies reimbursement is the revenue source, hazardous material supply replacement is the use of the funds, and the limit is $10,000.
Thank you, Ms. Lizzio. And second, the motion's been made and seconded. Is there any comments, questions? He's back on. I do see a hand in the back.
Veronica Kell, sixty-eight Meadow Road. I have two questions. This is on the second part, the expenditure limits and the use of funds. So, the questions are on line seven and line ten. Under use of funds, it says expenses for inspections regarding the MMRHS project. Can you give me an example of what those expenses would be? And then, the other one is conservation purposes under Conservation Commission, line ten. I guess my question is, again, examples of conservation purposes. And can a private citizen go to the Conservation Commission and request that funds be spent for, say, a camera on Old Meeting House Park to see if there are ATVs accessing that area? So, those are the questions. I don't know who answers them.
Okay, all right. Question comes on the motion. I'm not sure who might want to field that. Mr. Kreidler?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, to Ms. Kell, for you. The answer to the first question is, this has been a couple of years since the building project, the high school, has been going on, and the type of expense that's been paid out of there are the fees that go to the building commissioner and the associated inspectors. When they have to go do inspections on that project, they've been compensated out of this revolving fund. So, this will likely be the last year, God willing, the project's going to be done this time next year. This will be the last time you'll see this revolving fund. The second would be a question for the Conservation Commission on an ongoing basis. This fund would be for any conservation purpose, so if a citizen did request of the commission to do a trail camera for Old Meeting House Park, if they took a vote and deemed it appropriate, then that'd be an appropriate use of the funds, but it would be their call.
Okay, question, the answer comes on Article four. Any further discussion? Appears we're ready to vote. All those in favor of the motion on Article four, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, it's unanimous. Okay, that brings us to Article five. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and transfer from available funds in the treasury such sums that may be necessary to defray the charges and expenses of the town for fiscal year 2019 pursuant to a detailed budget totaling $22,317,465, or take any other action in relation thereto. All of you have the budget printed in the warrant, which shows the line items for personal and expenses. Also, there was a handout in the budget book which included the line by line, line item budget. That is in the budget book in pages, I believe, forty-two through fifty-seven, I believe. So, our general practice has been to take each category of government, take some time to review that, and either budget that you care to review will take some time, and then, if there are any motions or questions about that section, we'll entertain those during that section, and then, once we've finished that section, we'll vote on that section's budget. Mr. Jackson?
Mr. Moderator, just as a point of information, and due respect to the committees that did all the work, on the inside cover of our bulletin, I believe, is that correct, that the Finance Committee and Board of Selectmen voted on each of these articles, and their responses are in writing on the inside cover? Is that correct?
That's correct. On each individual article, you're referring to Ray, right? That's the report. Okay, so, does anybody have any questions about the procedure here? Okay, so, right now, you should be looking at the general government part of the budget?
We don't.
Oh, you're right, we don't. So, do we want to take it by motion here? All right, Mr. Miller?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate and transfer from the following available funds in the treasury. Comcast government access, operating costs of the MIS department, $175,000. Title five, MWPAT supplement to the MWPAT debt repayment, $27,538,000. West Townsend Reading Room supplement funding to operate the West Townsend Reading Room, $2,900. Ambulance receipts preserved supplement funding to operate the EMS, $450,000. Recreation receipts supplemental funding to operate recreation, $20,000. Water Enterprise Fund supplemental funding to cover water overhead, $233,820.30. Such sums that may be necessary to defray the charges and expenses to the town for fiscal year 2019 for a budget totaling $22,317,465 as follows. Functional segments, general government, $1,559,881. Public safety, $3,193,032. Education, $12,927,970. Streets and highways, $718,930. Solid waste, $669,284. Human services, $392,922. Culture and recreation, $386,817. Debt service, $507,432. And insurances, $1,961,196.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. I'd also like to take this opportunity to recognize Selectman Cindy King, who's joined us. Thank you, Cindy. Okay, so, the first section we will take up is general government. Page ten in the warrant, and in the budget book, it's page forty-two for the detail.
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Rahala?
I'm seeking clarification on if one uses the long form from the book, is thirty-four significant as a starting point? And then, when you get to page thirty-six, when you get to the total general government line, fiscal year requested, is that the third column? Is that where we're looking at those numbers from?
Yeah, there's, we've got a couple iterations here. There is the warrant, and there is the budget that's printed in the budget book, page thirty-six.
Is that an accurate line to be following this discussion? That's all I'm seeking.
I believe it is. One fifty-nine, $1,559,881.
Third column in?
Third column in.
And that will hold true as we go down?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Cludier?
Hi, Steve Cludier, seventy-nine Tyler Road. Wow, this mic is loud. While I'm here, I'm going to turn it down a little bit. Let's see, test one, two. Test one, two, okay. I question the, for two things, the wisdom and the ability of this body to transfer $175,000 from Comcast to MIS. The money does not belong to the town. It belongs to the ratepayers of Comcast Cable. And since I have been here, selectmen have tried to raid that fund for the past twenty years. And we've had selectmen who were wise enough at those times, and I can't speak to this group because I don't know how you're going to vote, to protect that money because it isn't the town's A and B. It's there to build a new TV studio and other facilities that we've been saving that money to do. C, it's there in cases a section of town that isn't cabled, that we may be able to help those people who don't have cable in that section of town, and kids can't get access to the internet, and things like that, to facilitate that. It is not there to support the IT department, of which I actually used to be director. I mean, that is a town function, not to steal money from the Comcast account. So, and I think legally, the town is probably on rather thin footing there. I know other towns that have been taken to task for taking money away from the ratepayers, the Comcast ratepayers, and using it for illicit purposes, i.e., purposes that do not facilitate public access, which is what the money's for. So, if somebody can explain how this can be done legally, great, otherwise, I think we have to eliminate this article. Thank you.
Okay, question comes on general government.
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Kreidler?
Through you to Mr. Cludier, former IT Department Director. This is the same function that was done when you were the director, Steve.
We owe $15,000.
No, that's actually not the case. If you look back at, if you look back at last year, there was always an amount sufficient to cover the operation of the studio, and particularly when Hartley, who's working the cameras, was brought on as an employee in the town, those funds were brought on to cover his salary and benefit load as well. The money that you're referring to, to do cable access extensions out on Vinton Pond Road and the neighborhood are separate funds that are still escrowed for that purpose. These are funds that come in from the 1% surcharge on all cable bills every year. It's roughly fifty grand a quarter that the town sees in revenue, and this would be the last year that we would have Hartley and his associated load, as well as any capital costs for the equipment maintenance or upgrades for the cable system in the operating budget because, as you know, we're in the process of setting up that cable corporation. So, I hear words like raid and illicit, and it concerns me because this is neither a raid nor is it illicit. It's, in fact, what we've been doing at least the three years that I've been here.
Thank you, Mr. Kreidler, and Mr. Cludier have a follow-up?
All right, I excuse the harsh language, Jim, because I know you're an honest person. It just seemed very excessive. So, Hartley makes $55,000, approximately, $60,000, something like that, but we're taking $175,000? I don't know. It seems like a lot. I'm going to hopefully bow to your better judgment, but I would expect to see an amount closer to eighty or ninety thousand rather than 175. So, that's my only comment.
Mr. Moderator? Question comes on the article, Mr. King. I'd like to know why some of those funds, that 176,000 that we want to not raid but we want to use, I was wondering why we can't do some of the extensions around because I live on New Fitchburg Road now, and I paid $414 for eleven days of AT&amp;T hotspot service because I can't have Comcast up there, and I know there's plenty of other people up in West Townsend, out on the Vinton Pond section, and we're paying exorbitant amounts for services other than Comcast, but if we have money coming in to provide extensions, why aren't we doing those extensions?
Mr. Moderator?
Comment comes and question come on the motion. Mr. Kreidler?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Moderator, to Mr. King. The last time the Select Board negotiated the franchise agreement with Comcast, it's a ten-year franchise agreement, they negotiated for a fee of $130,000 to do the Vinton Pond neighborhood. That money is sitting in account and ready for that upgrade work. You've got folks on that committee, Mr. DeAngelo is one in the audience tonight that have been working tirelessly to get that done. It hasn't been easy because you've had Comcast pointing one way, Verizon pointing another, and Unitil standing in between doing both. That money has been negotiated, it's set aside, and it's available for that purpose. The other money pursuant to the agreement that was negotiated by the Select Board is for the ongoing operation of the cable access system.
But some of us don't have access to cable systems, so, and I understand there's a committee that's working hard, and I thank them for their service, but why can't we get cable down that end of town?
Mr. Moderator?
Yeah, Mr. Kreidler?
Thank you. Through you to Mr. King again. The franchise agreement also has a formula that's baked into it that talks about the number of residences per, I believe it's linear mile, that you have to have before Comcast has an obligation to actually create the infrastructure.
We need an agreement to do that.
Does that conclude your comments, Mr. Kreidler?
Period.
Okay. But that doesn't answer my question. How come those of us out at that end of town can't get service? Shouldn't that be kind of something that the administration takes care of for us? Or should we just get on the horn and start calling Comcast? Mr. Kreidler?
Yes, through you, Mr. Moderator, to Mr. King. If you get on the phone with Comcast, they would refer you back to the franchise agreement that I just referenced that has a formula. I'm not certain, Mr. King, what your address is, or how many?
100 New Fitchburg Road.
And how many residences there are, and how it fits into that formula that they have, but they would refer you back to the formula. You do have a cable advisory committee, several members are in the audience tonight. I'd suggest you get with them to see how your neighborhood fits into that formula, and the Cable Access Corporation will be the place that you'd be then, this time next year, asking for that consideration. I think we're coming on five years into the ten-year agreement, and it's been five, and we still don't have Vinton Pond Road done, so I'm not...
Who was the person that sat down and negotiated this with Comcast?
Mr.? I mean, to King, really and truly, we got nothing up that end of town.
Mr. King, I think your point has been well made. I think we've got to move the meeting on. We can't spend it all on cable, sorry, but I think certainly Mr. Kreidler's given you direction as to where your grievance might further lie. Getting back to the budget. Anything further in general government? Okay, it seems we're ready to vote. All those in favor of the... All, all those in favor of the amount of, let me find the page here, $1,559,881 for general government, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no.
No.
The ayes have it. Public safety. Again, this is printed in the warrant for the--
Page 34. Somebody pass this?
Short version on page, beginning on page 13, public safety. And the total amount, public safety is $3,193,032. Is there anything to be said? Give you folks a chance to look over the budget, which is, as you could say, the short form is in the warrant, the long form is in the budget book, beginning on, let's see.
Mr. Moderator?
Page 40--
Mr. Moderator?
6, I believe. Yes. Mr. Rahala?
Again, back referencing the long form that I have in my book, it starts on page 34, and the numbers match up to the fourth column, not the third column. So the--
Um--
When you look at the labeling, the third column is the fiscal year 19 request, the fourth column is the fiscal year 19 TA recommend.
Right, we are, we would be voting on the fiscal year recommended amount.
And again, point of reference, that appears on page 38 in the long form that I'm looking at.
Okay, I think that we've got a couple different forms here.
I'm just trying to make sure that we're all seeing the same numbers at the same time.
Right. What you see on page 38 in the budget book, if I am not mistaken, reflects what is printed in the warrant. Okay, it just shows--
Which is $3,193,032. And if the warrant is different from what we're looking at up on the screen?
I presume it isn't.
That number's in the warrant also.
The same number in the fourth, fourth column. You're looking at, to find out what's the amount we're talking about for the total amount for the--
It matches, but I'm just referring--
Section is fiscal year rec--
It's page 38 that I'm looking at.
And you're looking at page 38, which is basically the same thing as you'll find in the warrant, the printed warrant. If you wanted to see a more detailed version of the budget, like the old budgets that we used to have, the line item budget, those begin on page 42 of the budget book, and public safety begins on page, I'm sorry, page, basically begins on page 46, but there's no detail until you get to page 47.
That's what I'm saying, depending which one you look at.
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Kreidler?
Thank you. I think what we're suffering from is perhaps too much information because we have three different versions in front of you. The warrant version and the version in the budget book beginning on page 34 are identical. That just shows salary and expense by department, and then totals by functional segment, and those are the functional segment totals you see in the motion that was read. When you get into the next section of the budget book that the moderator referenced, you have line item details, so you see paperclips and pens and gasoline and the like. Those totals all still are the same totals at the end of the day, so whether you're looking in the warrant version for public safety total, or the omnibus in the booklet, or the detail in the booklet, we're dealing with public safety, which you see up here I believe the documents, they're all consistent.
Those numbers, I believe, are consistent for public safety, whichever version you're looking at. The total for public safety that we're being asked to recommend or approve is $3,193,032. Are there any questions? Comments on that section of the budget, public safety?
Okay, not to belabor--
No, Ms. Kell.
Veronica Kell, 68 Meadow Road. Not to belabor the page numbers here, but what page in the long form, the 40 numbers? Do you find that final number?
It is on page 51.
Page 51, thank you.
In the black. You all want to be in the black, right? All right, from the balcony?
Margaret Genotar, Maplewood Drive, Townsend, Massachusetts.
Okay, Ms. Genotar?
I would like to, I would like an explanation for why the fire department and all the other departments in the public safety have increases of at least 2% or 3%, and the police department is having a personnel decrease of 1.6%. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator?
Question comes on the motion. Mr. Kreidler?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, through you to Ms. Genotar. What you see for the increases across the board for all departments are going to be that 2% to 2.5%, and that's gonna be a combination of either negotiated collective bargaining agreements, or collective bargaining agreements and steps within the town meeting approved pay matrix. So even though there's a reduction in the police department's salary budget, people within there that have negotiated contracts are getting raises. Having said that, there are two things that impact the salary in the police department that cause you to see the reduction. Number one is one position has been removed from the budget and was earlier voted on in the new revolving fund, which is the school resource officer, so that's a deduct of $80,000 from the personal services side of the police budget. And additionally, the police department has not yet finalized the negotiation of their collective bargaining agreements, so their raises, if they're to occur, don't yet show in the budget because that contract hasn't been finalized.
So to clarify that, in the, on the line item of the budget, it appears that the lieutenant, police depart, the lieutenant at the, at the police station is getting a $15,000 decrease in his salary.
Comments come on the--
Mr. Moderator, I want to get to that page because that should not be the case. Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Kreidler?
Yes, to Ms. Genotar's comment, if you go to page 47 in the long book, which is the detailed line item budget for the police department, the third line down is police lieutenant non-union, you'll see that there is a reduction of $2,810 for a negative 2.4%. And that is a result of the fact that the lieutenant used to be on-call as the second-in-command, for which there was a salary addition, and that's no longer the case for that position with the inclusion in the department now of a deputy chief position, that is now the on-call, so that's what the reduction is based on.
So does that mean there's nobody in charge then, if they need a second in charge?
No.
I'm pretty sure the police department's pretty low-staffed right now.
All right, the question comes on the motion, Mr. Kreidler?
If I follow Ms. Genotar correctly, the police chief is in charge. If the police chief is, is unavailable, incapacitated, out of the country, the deputy chief is in charge. It used to be that the lieutenant was in charge, because it used to be that the lieutenant's position was second-in-command. It no longer is the case.
Thank you, Mr. Kreidler. Any other questions? Okay, don't see any. Appears we're ready to vote on public safety. Again, the total, public safety amount, as you see on the screen, if you can see it, I can, $3,193,032. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it. Next section is education. And that begins in the warrant on page 16. And in the short version of the budget book, page 38, and then the detailed line item budget, education is on, begins on 51. Thank you. Comments? What's your point of order? So, yeah, wait for the--
Sorry, Michael Turgeon, 6 Blossom Drive. In my packet, it starts on page 18 for the warrant. Education starts on page 18.
On the, on the warrant. I got a different one. Okay, well, I got education on page 16. So, it's either on page 18 or page 16 in the warrant. That's the one I got, yeah. All right, this one's been revised, so don't go by this one. 18, page 18. Any further discussion on, thank you, Mike, on education? Not seeing any? I think we're ready to vote. The total amount for the education budget is $12,927,970. All right? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it. Next section is streets and highways. Thankfully, it's all on one page. In the warrant, page 19, the total being proposed is $718,930. And if you were looking on the long form, it begins on page 51. And ends on page 52, I believe. Yep. The total amount for the streets and highways being recommended is $718,930. Are there any questions? Have you folks had time sufficient to review this? All right, no questions on streets and highways? All those in favor of the amount of $718,930, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Okay, approved. Next section is solid waste services, which I believe are on page 20 of the warrant, and end on that page, for a total of $669,284. A little musical interlude, that's nice. You should see about doing that, you know? Yeah, right. All right, are we ready, ready to vote on solid waste? Okay, all those in favor of the total of $669,284, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it. All right, human services. That begins in the warrant on page 20, and ends on page 21, for a total of $392,922. And, Ms. Stonefield?
I would like to ask that next year, we have an index for all this paperwork, so that we can efficiently look at what we need to know and where it is. Please keep that in mind for next year, and I will be up again if necessary.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Stonefield.
Mr. Moderator?
Okay, Ms. Lizzio?
May I address that?
Um--
I know it's not on your agenda.
Well, point of information, I guess.
I just want, at this point, I'm not sure what the town meeting prefers to look at. So we would appreciate input. I know I've heard myself from a few people that they like the real line item budget, where they can see everything. We just, I mean, the other one is a summary of that, that's, it rolls up the expenses and it rolls up the other. If you could just let us know somehow, send us an email, whatever, just so that we have a feel for what, what the town meeting prefers, that might make it easier.
Okay, if there's any further discussion on human services? I don't see any hands. So the total, human services, if you're looking at the, the line item budget, again, I believe it begins on page 52 and ends on page 54. And, Mr. Sparford?
I'm--
Wait for the microphone, if you would, Steve.
On, I just, I agree with Mr. Stone-- I just, I agree with Mrs. Stonefield, but we took it upon ourselves, one has the budget, the other has the condensed version, and I got the long form, and we just sit there, and we don't have to shuffle through papers like everybody else is having to do if you don't have enough people to cover it. But it's going along smoothly, but we'll hope for the best, I guess. You're losing a lot of people in the shuffle here, that's why I think it's happening.
Right. I don't want to mix things up with a vote, a straw poll, but we can maybe do that before the meeting adjourns and, or just after the meeting adjourns, we can maybe take a straw poll to see what people prefer, the abbreviated budget or the line item budget. But right now, we're working on human res, our human services, and the total on the long form is page 54. And again, the total is $392,922. Right? All right, and Mr. Shank, did you have a question?
Can we just take a vote on which one of these we want to use tonight?
Not, what I, what I would, because it's presented in the warrant, we have to follow the warrant. The long line item budget gives you further details, which is similar to other times when you get other information to refer to. What I would like to suggest at the end of the meeting, before we dissolve, we do a straw poll, or at least immediately after we dissolve, to straw poll to find out what do people prefer, either the long form or the short form. And then, quite frankly, it is up to the selectmen and the finance committee to decide how to present it, but at least they will know what the town meeting's wishes are.
Mr. Moderator?
Uh...
Could I respond to? For right now, for those of you that really like a detailed budget and you don't really want to deal with the abbreviated one, don't, just put the other stuff down and look at the big book, follow along, listen for when he says in the long form what page it's on, if you're looking for the page number. If you're really following, maybe you know the page number already. But if you don't have to look at all three of them...
Right.
You can pick the one you want. The detailed one is the budget book, this one, and the, the end section, when he gets to the higher number pages, that's what we're following along for the absolute, if you want to look at, as Jim described, is the pencils and paperclip section as well as, but if you, if you, if you're comfortable with the budget as presented, then we've got the abbreviated portion just in the warrant so that it's less paper, really, and easier just to follow for the, just the general idea. But if you want to do the detail, don't even look at this. Put the warrant down until we're onto the next articles and follow along in the detailed portion, whichever you prefer. That's why there's more than one version here, to try to accommodate everyone.
I think that's a, thank you, Ms. King. I think that's a good way to explain it, that if you want to follow and you want to get all the details, use the long form. Otherwise, if you want, just, we don't have to bounce back and forth, you can just look at the short form or the warrant. All right, I think we're ready to vote. I think we haven't voted on human services yet, have we? No. All those in favor of the budget proposed for human services in the amount of $392,922, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no? It's unanimous. Next section is culture and recreation. In the expanded version, it starts on page 54, the long form, and it continues to page In the warrant, it is on page 22. Are we ready to vote? Any questions on culture and recreation? Not seeing any? I believe we're ready to vote on a total for culture and recreation of $386,817. All those in favor of that? Oh, I see Mrs. Coit.
The booklet I have says 384,817. This is on page six of the warrant.
Page six of the warrant?
Page six and nine. There's six.
Okay, that's, um... Culture and Recreation, yeah, page six? I think there may be a dated version, surely. I think that's a dated version. The, the version that I have in the printed warrant is on page eight for the total, and the total there is $386,817. And in the budget article detail in the warrant, it appears on page 22. And it is in the amount for culture and recreation, $386,817. And in the budget book, which has the detailed budget, it begins on page 54 and ends on page 55, and the amount total is $386,817. Which is the number on the screen. Okay, question up in the balcony?
It's not a, Jack Moran, Barker Hill Road. It's not a question, it's just a suggestion. Is the slide that's presented, does that include all of the articles? Can we just advance that to the article that we're discussing so that everybody can be on the same page?
That is the article with the totals. The, the other documentation has more details in it. So, if you want to take a look at that, you can, but that, that does reflect the numbers that we're, we're voting on unless they're amended. Okay? Thank you. Okay. Anything else on culture and recreation? Not seeing any? I think we're ready to vote. All those in favor of $386,817 for culture and recreation, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no? Okay, I believe that's unanimous. Now, next one is debt service. Again, that begins in the warrant on page 23. And ends on page 23. And is shown on the detailed budget, beginning on page 55. And ending on page 56. And the total amount is, as shown on the screen, $507,432. Okay, everyone knows what it refers to. We don't have a lot of debate about this one, usually. So, unless anyone has any questions, I think we're ready to vote. Okay. All right, all those in favor of the debt service amount? Make sure I get this right. Of $507,432, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no? Okay, the ayes have it, unanimous. Next section is insurances, which I think includes retirement, unemployment, begins on page 23. And ends on page 24. And this is our last category. And is a total of $1,961,196. Is there anything to be said? Any questions? Mr. McNally?
Thank you, you're doing a great job.
I have several questions on insurance, so I'll just do them all at once and then let whoever wants to respond.
Lance, could you just identify, I don't know if you did already identify yourself...
Oh, I'm sorry, Lance McNally, Shirley Road. I have several questions on insurance. The first question would be, what is unemployment? The second one is on health insurance. Could you please break it down on what the monthly cost per employee is for our health insurance? Then my third question is that I see Medicare broken out. I assume that it's the town's share that has to be paid for Medicare. I find it odd because an employer also has to pay their share of FICA. An employer has to pay unemployment to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts as well as federal. So, why is just Medicare broken out of salary, not FICA? That's my question. Plural questions.
Questions, okay. You have quite a laundry list there, Lance. I don't know if, Jim, you can try to fill that.
Gotcha. Ms. Moderator, through you to Mr. McNally. I watched the treasurer collector who does our benefits' eyes bulge, chin drop when you ask for the monthly employee contribution rate, so I think, I don't know if she's got it there on her. Do you have that with you tonight, Barb? No, the monthly employee...
Hold on for a second, and can we get a microphone over here for the town accountant? Thank you.
Hi, thank you, Barbara Tierney. I did not bring that information up with me, but I can give you an estimate. Is this better?
Yes.
Hi, I'm Barbara Tierney. I did not expect to give that information, so I don't have it in front of me. However, I can tell you the cost of the employee right now, we have a 75-25 breakdown. Our most recent bills average around $85,000. About $62,000 of that is a cost to the town, and the $23,000 is the cost to the employees per month. We have 39 people on the insurance. So, if I was to try to do the math in my head, I would say the cost for the employee a month for a family plan right now is, wait a second, $693. And that's about the 25% for a family plan, and it's about $230, $118 per pay, depending on which plan the employee picks. I could go down and get a bill if you want.
Um, I don't know, Mr. McNally, do you...
So, this, this portion on the bill right here that you're seeing, the $100 and something thousand, is reflecting the employer portion of the insurance.
Do you understand that question, Ms. Tierney? What is that, per employee? You're looking for how many employees are served by that number?
So, I'd have to do a calculation. It's kind of hard because it depends on whether it's a single plan or a family plan, and that's all combined.
So, it's not, not a one-for-one?
It's not a one-for-one. So, a family plan, right now, our family plan for our HMO is $2,394.12 a month. 75% of the town contributes to, 25% the employee contributes to. Right now, our HMO, single plan, is $986 and change a month, and again, you'd have to take that 75-25 per month. And just looking, thinking about the most recent bill I had, the bill was about $85,000. It was just under, it was $84,000 and change. About $62,000 of that is the cost to the employer, and the difference is the cost from the employees. You take that and just multiply it by 75-25. As for the Medicaid, that is our employer's share, it is different than federal taxes. Fed, we do not pay, we do not pay per paycheck for federal taxes. What we do is we file a 941 quarterly, which we have a payroll service that does this on our behalf. And it's, it's just part of the regular payroll, unlike Medicare, where we have to pay an additional 1.45%. And what was the other question? Oh, unemployment, we are self-reimbursing, so we, that means is if somebody files unemployment, we simply have to pay the state back for it. So, it's budgeted based on a generic number with expectations. And unemployment is a tough one because you never know until months prior what we're going to owe. But we're self, we're 100% self-reimbursed.
Okay. Thank you. Answers come on the questions. Mr. McNally, have a follow-up?
So, if I take the health insurance, which is, whoops, I did the one to the far left, which was $1 million, but the numbers would be close, but it's showing that we're paying $2,000 per employees for health insurance?
The price per month right now, we're paying, we're saying $2,394 and change. We are paying 75% of that on the cost. The employee pays $25. And that's why you're seeing the number each week, the longer you pay $1 million, it's 85%.
All right, I got to become a town employee.
All right, comments and questions? Thank you, Ms. Tierney. Any other questions on insurance? I think we're ready to vote. And thank you, Lance, for the questions. The total amount is $1,961,196. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no? The ayes have it. All right. I do not believe we had any changes, and so, the grand total, which we will affirm for one more final vote, for the budget is $22,317,465. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no? The ayes have it. Very good, thank you, folks. Took a little doing, but at least we know what we're spending. Article six, to see if the town will vote to fix the salaries and compensation of all elected officers of the town as provided by Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 41, Section 108, as amended, and as appropriated in this warrant or take any other action in relation thereto. Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Lizzio.
I move that the town vote to fix the salaries and compensation of all elected officers of the town as provided by Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 41, Section 108, as amended, and as appropriated in this warrant.
Second, motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Not seeing any? I think we're ready to vote on this. It's a fairly standard article. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no? The ayes have it. Article seven, to see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of $981,786.32 from Water Enterprise Fund reserves to operate the water department for fiscal year 2019, and in order to fund the cost of inter-municipal expenses, that $233,820.30 of this sum be appropriated in the general fund, or take any other action in relation thereto. Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Madala. Nathan Madala, Five Oak Street. I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $985,129 from Water Enterprise revenues to operate the water department for fiscal year 2019, and in order to fund the cost of inter-municipal expenses, that $233,820.30 of this sum be appropriated... thousand, eight hundred and twenty dollars and thirty cents of this sum be appropriated in the general fund.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded. Just note that there's a slight variance, which can happen from the article, from the motion. I think the motion, if I heard Mr. Madala correctly, was for a total sum of nine hundred and eighty-five thousand, one hundred and twenty-nine dollars. Is there? Right. Anything to be said? Looks like everyone's content on this one. All those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it. As I can tell, unanimous. Article eight, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, borrow or transfer from available funds in the treasury the sum or sums to be inserted for the purpose of funding the fiscal year nineteen capital plan as voted by the capital planning committee as detailed below, or take any other action in relation thereto. And I will, with the meeting's consent, not read the details, but leave that for the motion. Any objection? Okay. All right. Is there a motion on Article eight? Ms. Kane.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to approve the fiscal year twenty-eighteen capital plan and transfer from capital stabilization for police and fire EMS radios and communication equipment, a hundred and forty-nine thousand, eight hundred and twenty dollars. From, for the highway department brush mower sidewalk plow, a hundred thousand dollars. For, from ambulance receipts for the fire EMS third-year lease payment, an amount of sixty-seven thousand, eight hundred and seventy dollars. And from Water Enterprise funds for the generator at five forty Main Street, thirty thousand dollars. And for the pump station bridge replacement, forty thousand, ninety-nine dollars and fifty-two cents.
Okay. All right. Motion's been made and seconded. See the motion on the screen. It's a little bit of variance from what's in the article, but what we go by is the motion. Is there anything to be said on the motion? Mr. Sheldon?
Steve Sheldon, Eighteen Horseshoe Drive. There was more to this warrant. Police vehicle, forty-five thousand, a hundred and ten thousand on Meadow Road. There was just a lot more that was skipped. Just questioning.
Ms. Moderator. Okay. Question comes on the motion as to the items that didn't appear in the motion that were on, which were in the article. Any comment? Mr. Kreidler.
Yes, Ms. Moderator. The capital plan, the way the bylaw works is everything that's capital, that's going to be purchased or indebted for during the course of a year, has to appear in the plan. So that's why you see all of those things. When you see in the warrant, the police cruisers, for instance, it says in the operating budget. So earlier in the operating budget for the police department, that forty-five thousand dollar figure appeared and you voted for it. So that's why it doesn't appear in the motion. On the water department articles, the hundred and ten thousand dollars for the water main work, that was withdrawn by the water commissioners. The motion that was submitted by the water commissioners also did not include the fifty thousand for the one-ton dump truck. So that's why those two articles don't appear there. I think those are the variances.
Okay. Comments come on the motion? Any other questions, comments? Okay. I don't see any hands, so I think we're ready to vote on Article eight. All those in favor of the article as made and seconded on Article eight, on the motion, rather, on Article eight, please say aye. Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it. Unanimous. Article nine, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, borrow or transfer from available funds in the treasury the sum of twenty-five thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars for the purpose of funding equipment upgrades and repairs to the town's public safety communications infrastructure system. Is there anything to the motion? Ms. Lizio.
I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of twenty-five thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars for the purpose of funding equipment upgrades and repairs to the town's public safety communications infrastructure system.
Is there a second? Okay. All right. Motion's been made and seconded. Any comments or questions?
I want your information.
Yeah?
Um, I can, if I, if I, if I.
Oh, yeah. Use the mic, please. Hang on.
I'm sorry. I was using my teacher voice instead. I think there's a chunk of information missing from the last page in our report, and I think the finance committee might agree if you check. If you look at Article nine, it says after the communications center moved to Devens, the selectmen. And then it says available funds. I think there's a chunk missing between, I think you have the beginning of what you wanted to write for Article nine and the end of what you wanted to write for some other article, and then it goes to seventeen. I think there's a chunk of your report missing. And one of the reasons I say that, besides the fact that it doesn't make sense, is on the inside of the front cover, it says that you do recommend Article nine, but it looks here as if you're not recommending Article nine. I don't think that's the case, though. I just think there's a chunk of missing information. Thank you.
Okay. Comments come on Article nine?
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Kreidler.
Well, it wasn't a question, just to try to clarify that. What you're reading from is the, in the back page is the finance committee's report. So it does, it does look like there's a piece of information missing there. If you look in the warrant on Article nine, under the description, you'll see, I think, what was intended to be said and the rest of the comment by the finance committee, which is when former Chief Eaton and Chief Boynton made the recommendation to go to Devens, the commitment from the select board was that for each of the next three years, some of the money from the former communications budget, a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars a year, would be appropriated each year towards communications. So in the capital plan, you had roughly a hundred and fifty that was appropriated in the article just before. This is the delta to bring it up to the one seventy-five.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kreidler. Any other questions, comments on Article nine? Not seeing any. I think we're ready to vote. All those in favor of the motion on Article nine, please say aye. Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it. Back to the Article ten, to see if the town will vote to appropriate by borrowing the sum of one million dollars to pay costs of engineering, construction, and other related expenses to replace a section of water main on Main Street between five twelve Main Street and Wheeler Road. And that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with approval of the board of selectmen is authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section eight, subsection five, or pursue any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore, or take any other action in relation thereto. Is there a motion? Mr. Rafius. Mr. Rafius? Department head? You need a microphone. Yeah, hang on.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to appropriate by borrowing the sum of nine hundred and eighty-one thousand, two hundred dollars to pay costs of engineering, construction, and other related expenses to replace a section of water main on Main Street between five twelve Main Street and Wheeler Road. And that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the board of selectmen is authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section eight, five, parentheses, or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore. Although any bonds or notes issued by the town constitute general obligations of the town and a pledge of its full faith and credit, debt service on the bonds or notes authorized by this vote shall be paid in faith and credit, debt service on the bonds or notes authorized by this vote, oh, sorry about that. Read the same line, in the first instance, from Water Enterprise revenues. Any premium received upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any such premium applied to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Chapter forty-four, Section twenty of the general laws, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount.
We have that motion, Mr. Rafius, in writing? You want to have some comment first?
I'll leave it to the floor.
All right. That, quite frankly, seems to me quite different from what the article said. Correct me if I'm wrong. We're on Article ten, right?
Correct.
I think it might be helpful if you could explain, Mr. Rafius. Yeah?
Yeah. The last part, the bulk of the article, just basically states that these funds will be paid not from the general fund, but by from the Water Enterprise Fund.
Okay. Does anybody want to hear that again? No? Okay.
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Lizio.
I would like to know what it means because that's not the article that we had originally prepared based on what was asked for by the water department.
Right. The total amount seems to be consistent with Article ten, which, the Article ten was to borrow, to appropriate by borrowing the sum of one million dollars. This is nine hundred and eighty-one thousand, two hundred. The reason for it is the same, to replace the water mains on Main Street between five twelve Main Street and Wheeler Road. It's the funding mechanism that's a little bit different. And as Mr. Rafius, I think, explains, is so that the treasurer with the approval of selectmen can borrow the money pursuant to General Laws, Chapter forty-four, Section eight, five. But although the town is pledging its due faith and credit, the money to pay this is going to come out of the Water Enterprise Fund.
Correct. If the floor would like further clarity, I've worked with the town treasurer, if she would like to shed some more detail on this.
That would be appreciated, certainly.
Yep. So this is, the wording came from bond counsel and a recommendation. So like you said, the first part just points that the credit is backed by the good faith of the town. However, it's going to be paid from the enterprise fund. The next part is due to the new modernization act. If you do not use this wording, you cannot use any premium of the borrowing to pay down your debt. By including this premium additional verbiage in the motion, it now allows us that when we do go out to do a bond issue, if there is a premium paid, we can use it to pay down the debt. And that was in effect as of November two thousand and sixteen with the modernization act for borrowing.
Okay. All right.
Does that help?
Thank you. I think that helps a lot. Does anyone have any questions further about this article? I think, looks like we're ready to vote. It's, it would be my opinion is within the scope of the article, so I think we can vote. Town council, you have any concerns about that? Okay. All right. So I think we're good. All right. And I guess we're ready to vote. All those in favor of the motion on Article ten, please say aye. Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it. Unanimous. So we don't even have to count to make sure it's a two-thirds vote. Article eleven, I'll find my place here, two, see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, borrow or transfer from available funds in the treasury the sum of five thousand dollars to defray the charges and expenses for the planning and execution of the town's three-hundredth anniversary celebration to be held in the year twenty thirty-two, or take any other action in relation thereto. Is there a motion? Mr. Moderator. Mr. Miller.
I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash in the treasury the sum of five thousand dollars to defray the charges and expenses for the planning and execution of town's three-hundredth anniversary celebration to be held in the year twenty thirty-two.
Motion's made and seconded. To get the party started. Given all the planning it took to do our two-seventy-fifth, I think we're not starting a moment too soon. There is a hand out in the back, sir, I think, or, I'm sorry.
Oh. I wanted to ask the finance committee if there is something missing from the back page. Andrea, I see you nodding your head yes. Can the finance committee please fill us in with what you wanted to say that got omitted? Thank you.
We did not recommend this because, sorry, we didn't recommend this because we thought, because there were fourteen years to plan this, that they could form a committee and devise a plan before we made a monetary commitment.
Comments come on the motion. Anything else to be said? Yep. Ms. Clement?
Karen Clement, one oh one Main Street. We recently sat in front of a selectman meeting and a committee is to be formed for the three-hundredth anniversary. It should have been posted by now for committee members. Just to let you know that we did spend eighty-nine thousand on the parade for the two-seventy-fifth. Total cost for the whole celebration throughout that year was one hundred fifty-five thousand, nine hundred sixty-four, forty-eight. So in order to not scramble for that kind of money, plus, obviously, because it's going to be twenty-five years later, we would appreciate five thousand per year that would we request, which could be, from what I understand, rolled over year to year to be used in the celebration for the three-hundredth anniversary.
Comments come on the motion on Article eleven? Anything further, folks? Here's, we're ready to vote. Okay. All those in favor of Article eleven, please say aye. Those opposed, say no. Hmm. I think this is a majority, right? Yep. Majority has it. Article twelve, see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, borrow or transfer from available funds in the treasury the sum of thirty thousand dollars for the purpose of funding the hiring of consultants to assist the master plan committee appointed under the planning board with such areas as economic development, community meeting facilitation, research, survey analysis, and other related topics as required and voted on by the master plan committee, or take any other action in relation thereto. Is there a motion?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Kim?
Ms. Moderator. There is a change to the article, so if everyone could listen to the amount that we're asking for, then we do have a report from the committee. Article twelve, the motion is to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, borrow or transfer from available funds in the treasury, twenty-two thousand dollars to hire consultants to assist the master plan committee, which was appointed by the planning board with areas such as economic development, community meeting facilitation, research, survey analysis, and other related topics as required and voted on by the master plan committee.
Is there a second? Second. All right. Ms. Craven, can you bring that motion up? And can you articulate? Ms. Craven, can you bring that motion up and can you articulate on the motion as to where this money is coming from? It seems like you had a couple different funding sources there.
Free cash.
Okay, that's the motion?
Yes.
To transfer from free cash, the sum of $22,000. Okay, anyone want the motion reread? To fund $22,000 from free cash, fund the hiring of consultants to assist the master plan committee. Is there any questions or comments? Okay, Kim?
So communities are required under Mass. General Law, Chapter 41, Section 81D, to have a master plan and to update it periodically. Our last approved plan goes back to 2001, so having an up-to-date plan can help us with grants and sound community planning. In January, the Planning Board appointed those of us in the back row, Todd Malanson, Cynthia Donovan Schuster, Dawn Hayes, Bill Wrightout, Karen Clement, Veronica Kell, Andrea Wood up in the front, and Wayne Miller, to a committee. We are looking at areas such as land use, housing, economic development, natural and cultural resources, open space, recreation, our services, facilities, circulation, and transportation, all areas that support livable communities. Since January 2nd, we have met 10 times and completed work outside of meetings to assemble documents, research information, review past plans, create our stakeholders list, develop questions for community meetings, and for a townwide survey. To support the development of the plan, each committee member is conducting research and compiling existing information in the areas which we have interest or expertise. This step is saving the town a great deal of money as volunteers are compiling the background information rather than someone to do that task. We do need assistance, however, in such areas as economic development. The funds would allow us to retain the services of an individual or company to do that. The committee will also use the funds to validate the questions in the community survey, tally results, and hire a facilitator for key community meetings and others that will lend their expertise. The outside assistance will ensure that our plan reflects the vision of community members in an unbiased manner. To that end, the master plan will be holding committee meetings in May and June and will circulate a townwide survey later this year. The committee has reduced its request from our initial $30,000 to $22,000 as we were able to use $8,000 in existing funds. In comparison to other communities, this is a very small amount towards the future of Townsend. Comparatively, nearby communities have spent a great deal more. Groton spent $95,000, Air $100,000, Littleton $150,000, and Pepperell is spending $50,000 on their plan, and they have a full-time planner to assist them. We understand that we had many fiscal items for you to consider during this town meeting, but really hope that you will support this investment, which will benefit each of us by implementing best government practices and creating a town that accommodates the needs of all community members.
Thank you. Comments come on the motion, are there any questions, any comments? I hear somebody mumbled, moved the question, but I don't think we need to do that. I think we're ready to vote. So, all those in favor of the motion for $22,000 on Article 12, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, unanimous. Article 13, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, borrow, or transfer from available funds in the Treasury the sum of $4,000 for the purpose of funding the Assessor's Fiscal Year 19 periodic inspections and Property Data Verification Program as mandated by the Massachusetts Department of Revenue Bureau of Local Assessments, or take any other action in relation thereto. Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $4,000 for the purpose of funding the Assessor's Fiscal Year 19 periodic inspections and Property Data Verification Program as mandated by the Massachusetts Department of Revenue Bureau of Local Assessments.
Motion's made and seconded. Any comments, questions? Not seeing any, appears we're ready to vote. All those in favor of the motion on Article 13, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. It's unanimous. Article 14, see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, borrow, or transfer from available funds in the Treasury the sum of $1,500 for the purpose of funding a secure shredding contractor to dispose of documents and files that have exceeded their required retention, or take any other action in relation thereto. Is there a motion? Mr. Miller?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $1,500 for the purpose of funding a secure shredding contractor to dispose of documents and files that have exceeded their required retention.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. One question I have, is this to engage an actual contractor that will shred or a machine? Oh, all right.
Yes, this is to hire a company to come in and do a secure shredding of our documents that are, we apply to the state, you can do it yearly, to destroy records. According to, there's a retention schedule for how long we have to keep certain records, so we have to apply to the state, and then they'll send us a letter back allowing us to destroy. So we need to hire a contractor to come in and destroy those records for us.
Okay, all right, thank you. Comments come on the motion. Any other questions or comments? Mrs. Madala?
Sedano.
Oh, I'm sorry, Sedano.
That's all right. Darlene Sedano, 5 Oak Street. I'm just curious if you already got a bid. When I've supplied a truck for the Earth Day, it's never cost me more than $700, and we've never filled that truck, so I'm curious.
This is just an estimate, we don't know exactly how many records we have. We have a lot of records that we have to go through to see what we need to destroy. The town hasn't destroyed any records in many, many years. So this will cover all town departments, and because it's an onsite secure shredding, they come to us and shred the records right in front of us.
Yep, it won't cost you more than 700, believe me.
It may not. This was an estimate, not knowing exactly what we need to shred right now. Thank you.
Comments come on the motion on Article 14. Any other comments? Seems we're ready to vote. All those in favor of the motion on Article 14, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, unanimous. Article 16, oh, I'm sorry, 15. To see if the town will vote to fund, I'm sorry, to transfer from available funds the sum of $21,000 to the Conservation Land Fund, or to take any other action in relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator?
I hear a voice, no, Ms. Lizzio?
Aye. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $21,000 to the Conservation Land Fund.
Motion's made and seconded. Anything to be said? Right in the back there.
Hi, Natalie DeFouless, Birchley. I'd just like to hear from the Finance Committee since they didn't recommend this.
Finance Committee comments, Mr. Shaka?
From what I understand, Conservation Land was sold for this amount of money, and the money went into a real estate fund. The state views the proceeds from a land sale as town money. So we just decided to go along with how the state views it, as opposed to it being the Conservation Commission's money. So we voted not to recommend.
Mr. Moderator? Mr. Craver?
In furtherance to Mr. Shaka's point, everything Mr. Shaka said is correct under the law, that when those funds came in, there was a move at a prior town meeting to have those funds transferred directly into the Conservation Fund, and the town accountant correctly advised that the Department of Revenue stated that they had to go to a real estate proceeds fund, which they did. The folks that were involved in that land deal with the Commonwealth came forward this town meeting and said the intent had always been, and Leslie, I don't know if Leslie's here this evening, Ms. Gabroska, Leslie had the file and she was able to show that the intent had always been between the parties, that when the funds came back in, that eventually, whatever process it took legally to go through, eventually they would wind up in a fund to be used for conservation purposes. So it's taken us about a year and a half to get here, but the article before you was to take free cash, $21,000, put it into the Conservation Fund. So everything that Joe said is true and correct, and we did it that way, and we're required to have, but everything that Leslie has asked for in this article is also true and correct, and this is the way to get us where I think the parties had originally believed we should be two years ago.
Okay, comments come on Article 15. Well, I'll let the lady go first, Ms. Leslie. Use the microphone, please, we got a mic out there somewhere, there he goes.
I lost my microphone, people, and I had to go make an adjustment to something in the Selectmen's room.
Do you have any more microphones? Do you have any more, anyone want to volunteer to help Steve?
Hello?
Oh, Steve will help Steve, okay. All right, Ms. Gabroska?
The only issue with the money going into the sale of real property account is that money, oh, that's better, can be used to purchase, for any capital purchase that has a life of more than five years. So it could be used for acquiring equipment, or porting it towards a vehicle, or anything that's a capital purchase. So, and there's no way to earmark that $21,000 for Conservation Land? And to get this $21,000, we had to work long and hard and get actually two-thirds of the vote of the House and the Senate and the Governor's signature, all hoping to increase the Conservation Land Fund without having to ask taxpayers for as much money if the Conservation Commission ever found a parcel that they were interested in. I hope that makes sense.
Okay, now, gentlemen there, I'm sorry, you all set? Anything further? Okay, appears we're ready to vote on Article 15, on the sum of $21,000 for the Conservation Land Fund. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no.
No.
The ayes have it, and majority vote sufficient. Article 16 is to see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds the Cemetery Improvement Fund to the Sale of Lot Receipts Reserve Fund per the direction of the Massachusetts Department of Revenue Bureau of Local Assessments, or take any other action in relation thereto. Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Miller?
I move that the town vote to transfer all funds within the Cemetery Improvement Fund into the Sale of Lots Receipts Reserve Fund per the direction of Mass. Department of Revenue Bureau of Local Assessments.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded, any comments? All right, seems we're ready to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, unanimous. Article 17, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds in the Treasury the sum to be inserted for the purpose of supplementing the Stabilization Fund as allowed under Mass. General Law, Chapter 40, Section 5B, or take any other action in relation thereto. Is there a motion? Article 17. Ms. Lizzio?
I'm here. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from overlay surplus the sum of $30,000 for the purpose of supplementing the Stabilization Fund as allowed under Mass. General Law, Chapter 40, Section 5B.
Motion's made and seconded on Article 17. Is there anything to be said? Looks like no one has any questions about this one. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it. Article 18, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Water Commissioners to hire legal counsel or take any other action in relation thereto. Is there a motion? Mr. Rafius?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to authorize the Board of Water Commissioners to hire legal counsel.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to authorize the Board of Water Commissioners to hire legal counsel. Anything to be said? Any comments? Mr. Snape?
Jonathan Snape, South Row Road. Why do you need legal counsel?
Question comes on the motion.
Can you repeat that question, please?
Why do you need legal counsel? Is there something coming up?
Right now, there's a, there's a conflict of opinions whether we have the authorization to do this. In the past, because we are a self-supporting department, anytime we needed the use of town council, we would pay out of our own funds to do that. However, it poses a problem when there's a conflict of opinions between the Board and the Board of Selectmen. That's number one. Number two, if you recall, last year you passed unanimously, almost, a Mass. General Law to authorize the Board of Water Commissioners to be the exclusive, to have exclusive charge and control over the Water Department. So the Water Department needs to hire its own council to conduct business. That's what this is all about.
Comments come on the motion on Article 18.
Mr. Moderator?
Any further discussion? Ms. Lizzio?
Could we have Town Council talk about this one, please?
Do you?
No.
All right, the Town Council has any comments?
Is there a question, Ms. Lizzio, that?
My question is, can the town meeting authorize something like this?
Right, well, there is litigation pending in Middlesex Superior Court now. The Water Commissioners had filed what's called a declaratory action against the town seeking the right to retain counsel. That case is at the summary judgment stage, meaning that the court will hear argument and make a decision. The town has argued that this action is in violation of the town charter, Sections 1.4 and 3-2D. Generally, town meeting is considered a legislative body, and control of council is vested in the executive authority, which is the Board of Selectmen. I think that under Jenny versus Mattapoisett, which is a 1957 case, the town meeting does not have the authority to pass a bylaw which is in conflict with the town charter. I hope that's responsive to you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Jenkins?
Thank you.
Okay, up in the back, Steve, or Steve, Mr. Cludier?
Steve Cludier went to sleep, it's okay. Todd Malanson, Clement Road. I'd like to ask Town Council how then several local water departments do have their own town council that were passed at town, were approved at town meeting.
I would have to need more specifics than that, sir, that's very general, I don't know what town.
You can take Groton, you can take Westford, those water departments have their own council, separate from town council, that is paid out of the Water Enterprise account.
Do they?
It's been approved by Mass. General Law. In addition, the Mass. General Law is regarding an independently elected Board of Water Commissioners, DPCMR 22 oversees a lot of what you've mentioned. Thank you. Thank you.
All right, comments come on the motion?
Uh, Mr. Moderator?
Anything else further? Mr. and Ms. King?
Yeah, I'd just like to clarify something with town council. So are you saying that if we, that the, even if the town meeting were to vote in favor of this article, that it would be a mute point because we're in, uh, in court over this very question, and that we, the town meeting doesn't have the authority to do this anyway?
Yes, authority for the hiring of council under your town charter rests with the Board of Selectmen. The Board of Selectmen could authorize the water department to have separate council, as you have in the past, but ultimately, the decision is the Board of Selectmen's.
So if, just to, so, so, no matter what town meeting says tonight, that the Board of Selectmen would still have the final decision that town meeting can't, cannot make the authorization for town, for a council to be hired by the water department?
In my opinion, yes.
All right, I, I think that, um, we may have a conflict of opinion here that will not be resolved necessarily tonight at this meeting. Uh, it, it seems to me that if the majority of the folks at town meeting approve this, and it is null and void, uh, because of legal reasons, it's null and void. If it is valid, and it's, if it is, if it is approved, then, uh, it would speak for itself, but, um, we could debate this, the minutia of this for a long time, but, um, I, I think it's probably up to a, up or down vote, but I will recognize a few more people here. Um, ma'am?
Dan.
Okay, will you wait for the microphone, please?
Lisa Shaka, 59 Maplewood Drive. Just want to make an observation, that town council and the people on the podium, it's in the best interest of town council to make that observation that he just made, and yet, Groton and several other towns do exist with, um, separate council, as we know. That's all I'm saying.
Uh, comments, Ms. Sedano?
I move the question.
Okay, I'm going to, I'm gonna recognize one more person. Well, all right, you couldn't see the per, there was someone down below here had a question, and I'd ask you to defer. All right, all right, move the question. The motion's been made to move the question. You can not interrupt the, you can not interrupt the speaker, but the motion's been made. If you want to hear more, you vote it down. If you want to hear no more, you vote for it. So, all those in favor of moving the question, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no.
No.
The ayes have it. That cuts off debate, and now we will vote on the mo, main motion, which is... to authorize the water commissioners to hire their own council. All those in favor of the motion on this article, Article 18, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no.
No.
The ayes have it.
Yes.
Maintain the decorum, please. And I don't want any outbursts on the next one. Article 19, "To see if the town will vote to amend the general bylaws to add chapter to be inserted, prohibited driving and parking bylaw. Section 1, for the purposes of preserving and protecting the historic, aesthetic, and natural resources of the town common, the blank to be inserted are hereby authorized to prohibit driving and/or parking of vehicles of whatever nature within the town common. Uh, the, the board to be inserted may adopt regulations consistent herewith to implement such prohibition. Said restrictions shall in no event restrict town of towns and vehicles on official business. Section 2, upon adoption of this prohibition, uh, the board or entity to be inserted shall cause the posting of suitable signs to give notice to the public of such prohibition on, on driving, parking, or standing of vehicles. Such signs shall conform to any local sign regulations and shall be historically appropriate. The board to be inserted shall give notice of the intention to implement prohibition by publication for two successive weeks in a newspaper of general circulation in the town. Final publication to be not less than seven days prior to implementation. Section 3, uh, the boards named to be inserted are authorized to impose a fine for violation of regulations established for restricted parking zone under the town's noncriminal disposition authority. And section 4, in the event any prohibition of this bylaw, any provision of this bylaw or any regulation adopted by, uh, the board to be inserted shall be held illegal or unenforceable, the remainder of this bylaw or regulation not held illegal or unenforceable shall remain in full force and effect." Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator?
Ms. Lizzio?
I move to take no action on Article 19.
Aye.
Okay, motion's been made to take no action on Article 19. Anything to be said on that?
May I?
Yes.
Um, I put this article on, I'm, I'm choosing to take no action on it, but I want to explain why. There are a number of people on both sides, and my hope is that we will put together a team of people, a group of people who can help to resolve this problem by giving us solutions to the problem of tearing up the common with vehicles. This is not something that you're just gonna go to a board for, and the board is gonna make the decision, because you know what? It's you guys that don't agree. So what I'm hoping for are the very people who use the common for various activities take the responsibility to figure out how we might do things differently, and then come to us. Thank you.
Motion's been made to take no action on Article 19. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it. Article 20, at long last, um, "To see if the town will accept the Nashua, Squanacook, and Nissetisit Rivers stewardship plan developed by the Nashua River Wild and Scenic River Study Committee, together with its recommendation to seek Wild and Scenic River designation, or to take any action in relation thereto." Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator?
Um, Mr. Miller?
I move that the town vote to accept the Nashua, Squanacook, and Nissetisit Rivers stewardship plan developed by the Nashua River, Nashua River Wild and Scenic Rivers Study Committee, together with its recommendation to seek Wild and Scenic Rivers designation.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Is there anything to be said?
Mr. Moderator. I'm Joan Watkowitz, 20 School Street. I hope everyone had a chance to pick up a, uh, one-page handout that we put at the sign-in sheets, sign-in tables tonight, that explains this warrant article. Mr. Moderator, I would also like to ask permission to show a short video created by the Wild and Scenic Rivers Study Committee. It's only about four minutes long, and it really gives a good understanding of what this warrant article is about.
Okay, is there any questions about that? With the meeting's consent, we can watch that video. I understand it does have town, uh, meeting members speaking, and also some non-town meeting members, but I think the, uh, the meeting here can decipher, uh, the input of the, uh, video, and, uh, these folks have been waiting here all night long, so I think we'd give them the courtesy of seeing this, uh, video, and, uh, unless there's objection, I'll ask them to start it. Okay, let's, uh, do you guys bring the popcorn, or, uh, no popcorn? All, all right, we got a movie, anyway.
I have been standing in them. I've hiked along their banks, I've canoed and kayaked, and gone swimming in these rivers. I am an avid fly fisherman. I fish for trout in the Nissetisit, in the Squanacook, and largemouth bass in the Nashua. I have spent many, many hours on each of those rivers and find that they're the jewel of this area.
The Wild and Scenic Rivers Act was passed by the U.S. Congress 50 years ago to preserve rivers in this country that are unique and special. The Nashua, Squanacook, and Nissetisit rivers are outstanding in many ways, from their rich scenic, recreational, historic, and cultural values, to their unique biodiversity. And in 2018, if voters in 11 towns along these rivers vote in the affirmative at their annual town meetings, the Nashua, Squanacook, and Nissetisit rivers will become eligible for this distinguished Wild and Scenic designation.
These rivers have been such a valuable part of these communities, and there were stewards of these properties, these rivers, before us. We have a responsibility to be stewards now and going forward.
Three years ago, 11 communities along these rivers appointed individuals to serve on the Nashua River Wild and Scenic River Study Committee. Their task was to identify the many resources and opportunities for improvements. As part of their work, and with much public input, the committee developed the Voluntary River Stewardship Plan, a future guide to protect and enhance what is special about these rivers.
When I first heard about the Nashua River Wild and Scenic River Study, I was not sure what it would mean to the towns that would, were included in the study area. I wasn't sure if there would be additional federal regulation that would be imposed on the communities, and I wasn't really sure how it would impact the landowners along the river.
It's understandable for people to have those questions and concerns. It's absolutely not about creating a federal river park. We would have no land use management authority. We're not gonna affect hunting or fishing, or any of the other practices that are occurring right now on the river. What it is about is empowering local communities to care for a resource that they care deeply about already. Now, that's the whole idea of the Voluntary Stewardship Plan, to place communities out front and provide a framework for them to work together to protect those special river values.
With approval of the plan, we will be able to work on improving water quality. We can also work on educating the public about the value of the river and the resources, and work on opening the rivers for better and safer. Boating, that people really enjoy, perhaps by controlling invasives.
The Partnership Wild and Scenic Rivers Program is all about local action, local commitment, and local leadership. There are seven partnership Wild and Scenic Rivers in New England, and importantly, uh, New Hampshire has a great model in the Lamprey River in the seacoast area, which has a 20-year success history, and right nearby here, the Concord SubBay and Assabette Rivers have a similar 20-year success history.
This is a great opportunity for the towns to continue to work on improving their river. There's no cost to the town in participating in this plan, and in fact, there's the opportunity for federal funding to help us do our work.
These three rivers are so precious, and have been here long before we were, they'll be here long after we are. We have a responsibility to be good stewards of the river and be able to pass it on to the next generation.
Everybody get readjusted to the lights. Uh, thank you, Bill. Uh, Bill, uh, Bill Wilkinson, uh, one of the narrators there. Um, Joan, uh, is there any, anyone else have any other questions or comments? I know there are some folks here. Bill?
Thank you. Uh, excuse me. I'm Bill Wilkinson, 185 Wallace Hill Road, and I am the Townsend representative on the Wild and Scenic River Study Committee for the past two and a half years. The Board of Selectmen appointed me, uh, at that time, and tonight, we're asking the town meeting to vote on this article to accept the study committee's recommendation to seek Wild and Scenic Rivers designation, and to accept the Squanacook, Nissetisit, and Nashua Rivers stewardship plan. 11 towns are voting on this regional article. What will the Wild and Scenic designation do for Townsend and for the Squanacook? It will qualify the river for annual funds through the National Park Service, and will help to leverage additional funds through elevated status on grant applications. It will create a partnership between 11 towns, along with the Nashville River Watershed Association and the National Park Service, that brings expertise and funding to help protect our shared resources. The Wild and Scenic designation could help to prevent potentially negative effects of activities such as in-stream utility crossings. Townsend will have a representative on the locally-based stewardship council that will implement the stewardship plan. The designation does not stop development, it does not affect local zoning or property rights, it does not cost the town any additional monies, it does not create a national park, and it does not change hunting, fishing, or boating regulations. Hopefully, this plan will allow us to collaborate with the other 10 towns in this effort to keep the Squanacook, Nissetisit, and Nashua as the pristine and beautiful rivers that they are today. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkinson. Question comes on the article.
Hi, I'm Mike Turgeon, I'm on the Conservation Commission. Um, we, uh, well, I recommend that we vote for this. I think it's, uh, very important that we work with the other communities in protecting the river, and, um, I just wanted you to know that the Conservation Commission, um, invited Nashville River Watershed Association to our last meeting, and we had a, a good discussion, and, uh, we support the, um, approval of, um, the motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Turgeon. Mr. Snape?
Jonathan Snape. Um, I have two questions. I support the article, but I have two questions that are very selfish. Concerns the Grissmill, Historical Society's Grissmill. I did see in the report that it is mentioned to be, I guess, recognized, but I'm concerned that if we did finally get this thing up and running, is a, uh, action like this gonna close us down? We've met that before. The second question concerns the dam, and you do have a small article about dams, whether or not, I've forgotten the exact terminology you used, it was either productive or non-productive, those may not be the correct terms, and I'm concerned how that gets determined. I do know that there are groups, Trout Unlimited is very much interested in removing dams from rivers. Um, are we protected from that type of thing?
Question comes on the motion, and there are some folks here from the Nashville River Watershed, uh, that may be able to supplement the answers. Is there any objection to their speaking? Okay, so Joan, I'll leave it up to your folks from Nashville River Watershed who might try to answer that question for Mr. Snape. Ms. Campbell?
Yeah? We gotta get the mic for you.
All right, identify yourself, please, sir.
Yeah, should I stand up? I'm Jamie Fosberg, um, uh, the regional director of the Wild and Scenic Rivers Program for the National Park Service. Uh, yes, I'm the guy in the video. Um, the, uh, as I understand, the project at the Grissmill, it's probably something we, we'd look to partner with, and perhaps even, you know, help you accomplish something there. The Park Service is very pro, uh, historic resources, and the stewardship plan reflects that. Uh, I don't know the details of it, but, um, it's not gonna prevent any historic, um, reenactment, Grissmill types of things, um, and it may help that. I'm not sure what the, uh, other part of the question was about the dams, but, um, the disposition of dams stays with the owner. Uh, any existing dams are grandfathered... Any existing dams are grandfathered on the river, so if a dam owner chose to pursue removal, they'd still have that right. If they did not want to pursue removal, Wild and Scenic would not require it.
Okay, comments come on the question. Ms. Funneoli?
Sue Funneoli, 90, Pittsburgh Road. How far from the bank of the river is going to be included in this? What are the boundaries for...
Okay. Question comes on the motion, I think, related to... Is there a boundary that the Scenic River, Wild and Scenic River designation involves?
Right, right from the middle of the river, 200 yards, or 100 yards, or...
Okay. Mr. Cosmer?
Yes, so there is no land use control associated with it, so the boundary is zero.
Okay, comments come on the motion, right here. Okay. Karen Hill, right?
Karen Hill, sorry, 142 Pierce Road. It's my understanding that they're promoting that there will be funds available to do X amount of things in stewardship for the river. Just here, they said that they can help keep the river clean with different projects, and there will be federal funds available. The federal funds that are available are, to the tune, give or take, of $170,000 a year, divided by 11 communities. Out of that 170, they're going to use 65 of that, in theory, for administrative fees. So we're looking at around $100,000 divided by 11 communities. Most of those communities have the Nashua River in them. Townsend, Garroton, and Shirley are the only three towns that have the Squanacook River. We have one representative in Townsend that represents the Squanacook River. It seems a little one-sided toward... Weighing heavily, more heavily, on the Nashua than it does on the Squanacook and the Nissetisit. So I've talked to a lot of town people over the last few months about this, and they keep thinking there's going to be all kinds of money to do all kinds of things on the Squanacook River, and it just... The math doesn't seem to work. So I just want you to weigh that in a little bit. I think it's a good thing, but I don't think the Squanacook River is equally represented in this.
Okay, comments come on the motion. Ms. Lizzio?
Speaking as a voter and as an individual, when we moved here 40-some-odd years ago, if you took a fish out of the river, you probably wouldn't want to cook it. That went for the Nashua and the Squanacook. And we like to fish, and once in a while, we like to eat what we fish. But today, you see that the biodiversity is coming back. You see eagles. I've seen them down the harbor. It's an amazing thing. They're not going to eat fish or anything else that's in a river that isn't a good river. I want my grandkids and their kids to have that, too. I teach them how to recognize different animals and different birds. These are gifts that nature gives us. And if it doesn't give us any money, but it gives us teaching people how to respect the environment and how to appreciate it, that's enough for me.
Okay, hold on, folks. Let's keep things going here. Mr. Jackson?
I'm Ray Jackson from 14 Blood Road. I just wanted to point out that my involvement is a Squanacook River volunteer cleanup person. And one of the things I'm concerned about is, right now, it's very hard to raise and appropriate funds to clean up our river. I know, according to the plan for Wild and Scenic, there is a section in there that devotes to removing woody debris for safe boating. So my interest is also the safety of the public for both fishing and recreation, and learning to love and appreciate that river, is to be able to do it safely in a boat. And so, right now, we haven't had to raise and appropriate any town funds, but if this is approved by the towns, the 11 towns, and the U.S. Congress, and becomes official, then that 150, or 125, whatever it is, is then available. It doesn't mean we're going to be first in line, but it means there will be money available for those people representing Townsend and the other towns to vote on projects on the Squanacook River that may be necessary. So at least there will be over $100,000 available for us to have the opportunity to have a Squanacook project undertaken. And that's just my involvement. Thank you.
Okay, comments come on the motion. Ms. Gabrilsko? Down here, the microphone, please.
As a former conservation agent for 15 years, I think this is a wonderful idea. And this is sort of a more generic comment, but this is the 50th year celebration of the Wild and Scenic Rivers Program that was signed by Congress in 1968. So I just have a couple of sentences I wanted to read that President Lyndon Johnson said when he signed the Wild and Scenic Rivers Act. "In the past 50 years, we have learned slowly, I think, to prize and protect God's precious gifts, because we have..." Our own children and grandchildren will come to know and come to love the great forests and the wild rivers that we have protected and left to them. An unspoiled river is a very rare thing in this nation today. Their flow and vitality have been turned to open sewers by communities and by industries. It makes us all very fearful that our rivers will go this way unless someone acts now to try and balance our river development. I just think it's a great idea and support it.
Okay, comments come on the motion. Mr. Wallace, the motion to move the question that will cut off debate. All those in favor of moving the question, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, unanimous. I think we're ready to vote. All those in favor of the motion on Article 20 to accept the Nashua, Squanacook River, Nissetisit stewardship plan developed by the Nashua River Wild and Scenic Rivers Study Committee, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The ayes have it. Article 21, to see if the town will vote to amend Chapter 6 Automatic Fire Alarm System general bylaw of the Code of Townsend as follows. Sorry to be moving right along, folks, but thank you for your time coming out to Townsend. Replace the word "master" with "radio" throughout the bylaw. Section 6-2, definitions, 1, automatic fire alarm system, insert quote, "or private monitoring service," end quote. Section 6-2, restrictions on tape dialers and similar automatic telephone devices. Delete this section in its entirety. Section 6-5, alarm system malfunctions, fines. Define allowable alarm malfunctions as per calendar year. Increase fourth offense fine from $50 to $250. Increase fifth and subsequent fines to $300. Delete paragraph C in its entirety, and delete paragraph D in its entirety. Submitted... Okay, that's the motion. Is there... I'm sorry, that's the article. Is there a motion?
Well, actually, it's just like that.
It's just like that?
I wanted to say so moved.
Wait, I should have, yeah. Shut up. It's too late. It's getting late, folks, and I'm...
Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to amend Chapter 6 Automatic Fire Alarm Systems general bylaw of the Code of Townsend as follows. Replace the word "master" with "radio" throughout the bylaw. Section 6-2, definitions, 1, automatic fire alarm system, insert "or private monitoring service." Section 6-2, restrictions on tape dialers and similar automatic telephone devices. Delete this section in its entirety. Section 6-5, alarm system malfunctions, fines. Define allowable alarm malfunctions as per calendar year. Increase fourth offense fine from $50 to $250. Increase fifth and subsequent fines to $300. Delete paragraph C in its entirety, and delete paragraph D in its entirety.
Motion's made and seconded. Anything to be said? Any questions? Doesn't appear... There are, I guess... We do have a question.
Hi, Victoria Genicki, 14 Old Battery Road. I noticed on the slip that the selectman said "hold" on this one. Can you explain that recommendation?
Question comes on the motion.
Mr. Moderator?
Ms. Lizzio?
I believe when we voted on this a few weeks ago, we didn't have the entire text yet, so we simply said we were going to hold on it.
But you are moving, making the motion now? Okay. All right, question comes on the motion on Article 21. Anything else to be said? Looks like we're ready to vote. All those in favor of the motion on Article 21, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Unanimous. Article 22, to see if the town will vote to adopt Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 60, Section 23B, to allow the treasurer-collector to charge the cost of a municipal lien certificate, MCL, to the fees scheduled set forth in said statute, or to take any other action in relation thereto. Is there a motion? Mr. Miller?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to adopt Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 60, Section 23B, to allow the treasurer-collector to change the charge... Change, okay. You screwed me up, see. The cost of municipal lien certificate, MCL, to the fees scheduled set forth in the said
Motion's made and seconded on Article 22. Any questions? And appears to be none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Unanimous. Article 23, to see if the town will vote to accept the 12th paragraph of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 41, Section 81U, to allow the planning board to take and hold deposits to secure the performance of an obligation by an applicant for a license or permit, or take any other action in relation thereto. Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator?
Ms. Lizzio?
I move that the town vote to accept the 12th paragraph of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 41, Section 81U, to allow the planning board to take and hold deposits to secure the performance of an obligation by an applicant for a license or permit.
Motion's made and seconded. Anything to be said? Any questions? Appears not. Looks like we're ready to vote. All those in favor of motion on Article 23, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, unanimous. Article 24, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to issue a request for proposals, RFP, for the sale of the Squanacook Hook and Ladder Center Fire Station and the Harbor Fire Station for adaptive reuse, or take any other action in relation thereto. Is there a motion? Mr. Miller?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to issue a request for proposal, RFP, for the sale of the Squanacook Hook and Ladder Center Fire Station and the Harbor Fire Station for adaptive reuse.
Motion's made and seconded. Anything to be said? Mr. Page?
John Page, 8 Smith Street. My understanding has always been, with regards to the Harbor Station, that when that was given, as it were, to the town, that it was with the condition that it be required that it stay a fire station? And would this then result in a loss of that back to the estate?
Mr. Moderator?
Question comes on the motion, Mr. Kreider.
Through you, Mr. Moderator. Mr. Page, you are correct in your statement that there is a provision in the deed when the town took possession that said it has to be maintained for fire use. So one of the things that was talked about at the selectance meeting when this point was brought up was that the RFP would need to be crafted in such a fashion that could be honored. So for instance, if somebody had a historic fire station proposal, they wanted to come in and they wanted to house antique equipment and refurbish it as a fire station, that would meet the terms under the deed and allow the town to continue with the property. But you're correct, if it was used for something other than fire service or fire-related use, it would revert back to the family.
Comments come on the motion, and I thought I saw Chief Klein?
Same question.
Okay. Ms. Cal?
Veronica Calmetto Road. I guess, then, should this be separated so that it's two articles, so that the RFP can be written with that in mind? Because if we approve this, it looks like that stipulation would not need to be honored necessarily.
Mr. Moderator? Mr. Kreider? Through you to Ms. Cal. Your point is well taken. I know that the minutes of the select board meeting when this was discussed, it was indicated that when the RFP is drafted specifically for the Harbor Station, that language would be included so as to not risk losing the property. So it would be relying upon the select board to appropriately cover that issue when the RFP is drafted. Other than that, an amendment to this to include for the Harbor Station that any adaptive reuse be fire service-related.
If the meeting will indulge me, I guess I would have to pose the same question about the center station, as to what limitations might be placed on that adaptive reuse. Kind of a historic building.
Mr. Moderator?
Yeah.
Through you to you. There was no reference in any of the deed paperwork that I was able to see in the file that indicated there was such a right of reversion?
Well, yeah, I guess I'm not... Right, I'm not suggesting a right of reversion might cause us to lose it, so we... I guess I'm concerned that because it is a historical building, I think, in the center of town, that the town be respectful of that historicness, and that we don't just sell it, someone tears it down and puts up a strip mall there.
And through you...
If you would.
Yeah. I know at the select board meeting, this was discussed in some detail, that they would want it to craft the request for proposals to be historically appropriate. Originally, it said with a premium to be placed on educational, public safety, or nonprofit use. That was taken out of the article to allow for the potential for commercial use. For instance, some communities, you'll see, where an old fire station has been marketed for an adaptive reuse, where there's, you know, a pub, or a bookstore, or something retaining the architecture, but having a different type of a use inside. So again, I think, if my memory is serving, the board said that they would entertain some public commentary on the RFP before finalizing, to make certain that everybody was heard.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kreider. So just so people are clear, that if the motion passes as is, we are, you know, trusting, I guess, the selectmen to do the, you know, the right thing, but they will be the ones to determine the right thing. And Ms. King, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to add that what we're thinking at the Board of Selectmen meeting and what I'm still thinking is that if we were concerned that we don't know what the responses would be to the RFPs in advance, so rather than try to list every possible circumstance and every possible restriction that could be applied to this, we might lose out on something that would really, we'd really sound... Would be a good RFP. If we put on an RFP for something and then someone wanted to make... If we put on an RFP for something and then someone wanted to make a proposal for something that wasn't listed specifically here, then we wouldn't be able to even accept that and might have to sell it to somebody that we didn't really... that was a better idea. Rather than have too many restrictions, and there might not even be... by the time something like this would even occur, might not even be the three of us or anyone else. But this... I don't think there's anyone in town that wants us to go to something that would be inappropriate. And no one wants to see the building burned... or torn... not burned down either, but torn down. But the priority, of course, is because of the history of the building, the history of the fire department having been in there for its history, that would want to be kept. But we want it to be as general as we could be for this article, to give some leverage so that people could bid on it in some way that might actually be good. It doesn't mean we'd accept any bid, but it just gave us more leeway.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. King. All right. Ms. Gustafson. Microphone, anyone out there? Steve?
Moderator.
There we go. We have a young volunteer here. He's doing a great job. I'm referring to Mr. Sparford. And the young man over there.
I'm Carol Gustafson, 9 Brookline Street. The center one in particular is very special to me. I live in the center. I go by it all the time. And I really want to make sure that we maintain its appropriateness. But I'm concerned about parking at both of them. I don't know if you've discussed that at your meetings, but I think there's very little parking to be said at both buildings. And at the same time, while we're talking about the fire departments, I think we should still think about that library that's sitting there and going into ruin. I mean, if we can look at the fire department, let's look at the library also.
Okay. Comments come on the motion? Okay. I'm going to recognize... Kelly? And Chief, and then Ronnie.
Should be on, Kelly. I guess it is.
Kelly, Kelly. Hi, Torres Lane. Is it possible to form maybe a committee of interested citizens to offer input? I would love to see perhaps some of the current and past fire chiefs on there, people who have a real close connection, some of our community members that really have grown up with that building, so that whatever happens with this business... with these buildings is a community decision versus a Board of Selectmen decision, no offense to the Board. But if these buildings are as well-loved as they are, it would make sense that whatever decision is made should be something that the community supports with public hearings and input from a variety of people.
Okay. Good comment. Come on the motion. I'm going to try to follow the folks who have their hands up. Chief Klein?
This is for any member of the Board. I see that you have the hook and ladder, but does that also include the property right next door? There's a small lot that was, I believe, was a separate lot.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Kreider, yeah.
On two points. First, to Chief Klein, yes, the contemplated RFP would include that lot for additional parking. Still not an enormous spot, but it is an additional space. And to Ms. Kelly's point, perhaps to comfort people in the room, an amendment as simple as after request for proposal, to be developed by a committee of local residents with a connection to the station.
Is that an amendment?
I can't make an amendment.
Oh, all right. Well, what... Ms. Kelly, do you want to make that amendment?
I would.
Yeah, you should.
I make a motion to amend the current motion to include a committee to be formed to review the request for proposals, a committee of five. And the committee members need to have some connection... previous connection to the fire station.
Good. Now you have to write it in.
Okay. All right. Yeah, we need to get that in writing, Kelly. While you're doing that, I saw you, but I did see some other hands first. Ronnie? Ms. Cal?
Second, by the way.
Say again? Oh, was there a second on that? Yes.
Second.
And we'll get that written up, hopefully, and reread. But just comments generally or comments while we entertain the motion to amend? Ms. Cal?
Veronica Calmetto Road. I wanted to add wording into the amendment that says that the RFP would take into account the historical requirements of each building. Maybe a committee takes care of that, but... Pardon me?
Well, we don't want to get too many amendments too late in the night here.
If it's accepted. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay. I just don't want that to be lost, and it is going to be, you know, you don't... what Ms. King said was that it could be a whole different group of people that wind up looking at this and... I should keep this here. And may not... the wording of the historical perspective needs to be captured in my mind somehow.
Okay. Let's get that first amendment, and then we'll see what they write for an amendment. And Ms. Gurkin? All right.
Susan Gurkin, 403 Main Street, West Townsend. I have a question that pertains to this. We have a properties and a building committee. Does it fall under them?
Question comes on the motion. Does this come under the building or property committee? Mr. Kreider?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Through you to the person who spoke that I couldn't see. I didn't have my glasses on. I apologize. My understanding is the building committee has not been active of late. So, if, in fact, there are people that are still on the building committee that are active, then absolutely we would need to, as per their charge, work through them as well.
Okay. All right. Thanks. Comments come on the question? Ms. Funialy, did you have a question? No. All right. Mr. Melanson?
Todd Melanson, Clement Road. Couldn't we include this under the master plan since a lot of the historical and things like that are already part of our plan and included in our survey?
Comments come on the question, I guess, comes on the motion? And certainly I think that's something that could be considered, but it's not something I think that we can do tonight specifically, but it's something that master plan committee certainly could consider. And do we have that motion yet? The motion to amend, that is?
From Kelly Kelly.
Yeah. The motion to amend is a move to amend the current motion to include a citizens committee of five to review the RFPs to include citizens that have a previous connection to the fire That's the motion, and it was seconded. So, we have debate on this motion? Is anything to be said on the motion? Ms. Craven? The motion to amend, that is.
Kim Craven, 87 Lunenburg Road. I think involving community members is great, but I think to just limit it to those that have a connection to fire services is limited and limiting the number of people that might want to be involved, I don't think is, you know, open government. So, I like Kelly's motion to include people, but I think it needs to be a little bit more inclusive. So, I don't know if, Kelly, you'd entertain modifying your motion? Point of order, John. I don't know how that works, but...
Well, there's two ways we could proceed. You could make a motion to amend the amendment, or we could entertain a friendly motion to amend that by... if Ms. Kelly would accept that, to strike that language of having a connection to the fire department?
Mr. Moderator. Perhaps a friendly or friendly part is with a preference for members of the community that have a connection. That way, there's at least a focus on that, but it's open to everybody.
Sure.
All right. So, all right. I'm not sure how to put that. It's citizens that have a... I'm not sure how to phrase that, quite frankly. A preference for the fire department or...
...for the preference for members to have a connection with the fire department?
Okay. Citizens...
I didn't know if you wanted...
Include a preference for citizens that have a previous connection to the fire department? Is that... All right. Ms. Jackson? Oh, I'm sorry. Get your mic.
I think we're making it complicated. Maybe if Kelly just took that out, but the... strike that out or whatever it is. But in the wisdom of the appointing authority, which I'm guessing would be the selectmen, in their wisdom, they would strike a balance if 25 people and one person they know has a fire connection or none do. I mean, you're restricting it. You're mandating that it has... now has to be a fire, so I would take it out and ask the appointing authority to strike a balance on gender and experience.
All right. Comments come on the motion. Mr. Stonefield?
Mr.?
All right. All right. A motion to table now, I think, does take a preference to the pending motion. Well, they already have a motion to table.
I didn't hear.
And then we had a motion to move the question. I did not hear a second to your motion, John. And we have a motion to move the question, which would cut off debate on the motion to amend. I would suggest that if you want to try to revisit this at another time, if the motion to amend is defeated and the motion... principal motion is defeated, we can go back to the drawing board at a special town meeting in the fall. But if the motion to amend is allowed, we go forward with that amended motion. So, now we're going to move... we're going to vote on cutting off debate on a motion to amend. The motion to amend currently says to amend the current motion to include a citizens committee of five to review the RFPs to include a preference for citizens that have a previous connection to the fire department. Those in favor of moving the question, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no.
No.
Okay. We've moved the question, and now we're going to vote on a motion to amend the current motion. Any questions about that? All right. All those in favor of amending the current motion to include a citizens committee of five to review RFPs to include a preference for citizens that have a previous connection to the fire department, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no.
No.
The noes have it. Brings us back to the original motion, which is to authorize the selectmen to issue a request for proposals for the sale of the Squanah Cook Hook and Ladder Center Fire Station and the Harbor Fire Station for adaptive reuse. And is there anything further to be said about that? Not seeing any. I think we're ready to vote. All those in favor of the motion on Article 24, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no.
No.
The noes have it. Article 25: To see if the town will vote to authorize the tax collector to hold a tax title auction on tax title properties held by the town or take any other action in relation thereto. Is there a motion? Ms. Lizio.
I move that the town vote to authorize the tax collector to hold a tax title auction on tax title properties held by the town.
Motion's made and seconded. Anything to be said? Mr. Cludia?
Just a quick question. Will all properties that are in tax title be auctioned or will some not be?
Question comes on the motion.
I want to clarify. These are properties that have already been foreclosed on or already owned by the town, not properties in tax title. It's a little... I know, it does say tax title. But this is allowing me to dispose of possible... of parcels that the town has tax title ownership. That means we've already... we already own it. So, it's very different from just being in tax title.
Comments come on the motion. There is a question right here.
Pat Russell, 294 Main Street. My question is, is there an anticipated timeframe for this auction to take place? And again, will all properties held by the town be included in this auction?
Question comes on the motion. Ms. Cheney?
At this time, there is no timeframe for the sale. This is just giving me permission to start the process. And what was the second part of the question? Again, we're going to start with a generic list. We have to go down. There's some properties that the town owns that might not even be visible to sell, that we've owned for 50, 60 years. I might not even be able to find certain slivers of property. I'm going to have to go through the list of what's owned, figure out what's sellable, and begin the process. Jim might have more insight on that.
Comments come on the motion? And, okay, who... I know you're pointing at someone, but I don't know who you're pointing at.
What might determine whether a property is eligible to sell?
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Kreider.
Thank you.
I'll wait in here a little bit. There could be some properties that the town owns, having foreclosed on. So, there's a list. Once Ms. Cheney puts that list together, it'll first be demonstrated across the board to all departments of the town to make certain that there's no... the conservation commission might look at one parcel and say, hey, that's contiguous with another parcel we own, or that has some specific habitat. That then would come off the table. It could be that the fire department looks and says, well, this is an area that is close enough to a training ground that we're considering doing, so we'd like to hold on to that. So, departments will get the first crack at the list. So, if the town already owns it and there's a municipal use, we retain that. After that, what's left on the list, if we own it, would go up on the board. Everybody would have the opportunity to come through and look. When I've done these in other communities, it literally is maps out on the board, so you can come by with advanced notice for 30 days, look at the maps. There might be something that's in your backyard you didn't even know was owned by the town and it's adjacent to your, you know, where you want to put your shed. You come in and you can bid on it. So, there'd be advanced notice of all the parcels, but town properties, excuse me, town departments will get first crack.
Okay. And...
Ma'am, if you might, there's another hand up. Sorry, got to recognize some other folks.
I'm just curious if the properties are sold singly or as a group?
Ms. Kreider?
They would be sold individually. So, if, again, there could be a back parcel that has no value to anybody other than you, you put in your bid for it.
Comments come on the motion? Ma'am? I'm sorry. Your name again?
Pat Russell.
Okay, Pat.
And so then, how would we be notified or how would it come about that we know the maps would be out there to come and look and put in a bid?
Mr. Kreider?
That's how we... That's how we drag you into Town Hall. We never tell you, and you have to show up every day. No, the treasure collector will do all the work. She'll get the list finalized. The select board will ultimately authorize the sale, so it'll be at a public selectmen's meeting on television, covering the local press. We can also make certain that it's on the website. There is a function on the website that you can sign up for, that would put you on an email list. So, anytime we want to send out an email blast with information, you'd get that. Sometimes you'll get things you don't want to see, but there's the occasion that you get something that you'd like, so I'd encourage you to sign up for that, and we make certain to use that function as well.
All right, Mr. Spofford.
I don't know what too many people are worried about, but the neighboring property owners will probably snap these little pieces up within 10 minutes of going on air, finding out about them. I know if I had a sliver of property next to mine, I'd buy it. And this one, it'll be gone. We'll make money.
Comments come on the motion. Mr. Snape.
Move the question.
Okay, question's been moved and seconded, cut off debate. All those in favor of moving the question, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The ayes have it, unanimous. All right, the motion is before you, on Article 25, to authorize the tax collector to hold tax title auctions on tax title properties. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Unanimous. Article 26, to see if the town will vote to authorize the conservation commission to accept a certain parcel of land, or take any other action in relation thereto. Motion. I hear a voice. And Stonefield.
On the straw poll about the budget? Okay.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Turgeon.
I move that the town vote to authorize the conservation commission to accept a certain parcel of land totaling 8.8 acres to be held for conservation purposes.
Motion's been made and seconded. Anything to be said? Perhaps Mr. Turgeon could give us a little bit more information, save some questions, I think, that may be generated.
That was exactly what I wanted. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Okay, so, this parcel is a, there was a project that came before us. It's around about 12 acres of land. It's off Warren Road, adjacent to where they stock for the, stock the trout. So, one, one single family house. And they were close to the, the driveway was going in close to the water. So, as part of the mitigation for allowing the driveway, they're offering us, they offered us a parcel that was 9.3 acres. And they had some problems at the planning board associated with, they, there was, they had to move the floodplain, I mean, the floodplain was, couldn't be included in the parcel for where they were going to build the house, or something. And so, they came back to us and requested to change the piece to 8.8 acres. And we amended the order of conditions to accept the 8.8 plus a deed restriction for the remaining 0.5 acres. So, this parcel is 8.8 acres of land that is predominantly wet, with some upland associated with it, but it's in a very important natural setting. It's in an area that's near the Witches Brook Water Supply, and I think maintaining the land for conservation purposes will provide some recreational use and protection of the water supply.
All right, comments come on the motion. Ms. Kel.
I have questions on this, and I do know about this, because I was on the conservation commission when this property came forward. It is the only property that I voted against. You know, when you live in town, and you have bylaws and regulations, you expect that those regulations are being upheld. And where I am not at all opposed to holding property in conservation, when a property comes forward that doesn't have clean title, and you look at it, and you say, oh, well, that's okay, we'll, we'll condition this anyway, and the condition is for 9.3 acres, which then, after it's been written, goes to the planning board, and yeah, the water, it's underwater, and we have a zoning bylaw that doesn't allow land that's under the mean water line, or whatever, to be included in the lot size. And we have waived all of the regulations to allow the building of this property, which, by the way, used to be part of Witches Brook Well Company. So, this was a property that wasn't in someone's land, you know, family land for a long time. So, I guess the question becomes, is this half acre deed restriction in existence? Is it registered with the registry right now? I know it's only a half acre, but I believed when this order of condition was signed, that we were getting 9.3 acres. And so, question one is, is the deed restriction in existence today, registered with the registry? And then also, is there public access to this land? Those are my two questions for the conservation commission.
Questions come on the motion. Mr. Turgeon.
The deed restriction has not been submitted to us yet. The deed restriction was just required at our meeting last week. So, the owner will not be able to build until the land, the 8.8 acres is conveyed to the conservation commission, and they've come back with an appropriate deed restriction, 4.5 acres. So, they will not satisfy the conditions of the permit if they do not provide the deed restriction, and no work can start until they do that. What was the other question? Public access would, no, not the, no, the, what's, the Zodiac roads off the, off of Warren Road, past Timberly Park, the, there's a road that could? No, no, it's, it's not in Timberly Park. It's, yeah, either Virgo or Sagittarius, there's access in behind those lots to the land already, and there's trails back there, and the piece, the back piece of the land, it can be accessed by those trails.
Comments come on the motion. Ms. Kel.
I guess, for me, this is still shaky. If it were solid, if the deed was registered with the restriction, I would be saying, yeah, let's vote for this. But I would rather see it settled and in place before I vote yes for this. If it were in place, I would be a yes, but it's still shaky. It's been shaky for two years, so.
Mr. Turgeon.
Well, it's, it's not shaky, because they're not going to be able to build until they give it to us. And I guess that's the main point. We conditioned it for to get 9.3 acres, and now, we're conditioning it to receive 9.3 acres as either land conveyed, or land under a deed restriction. And there's no other.
You've got to be recognized to move the question. There's a hand up in the back. No, they have to be recognized.
I want to, this is Laura Dole, Meadow Road, and I'm concerned, it's been brought up that to build on this property, waivers to the bylaws, and the regs had to be made. And I live near a lot on Bootell Road, where things were waived so that someone could build. And I want to say I'm tired of the rules and regs that we have in place to protect the drinking water and the wetlands being waived. And I think it needs to change, and I'm, I'm not going to vote for this, because it just sounds fuzzy. Thank you.
Comments come on the motion. Any further questions, comments? Looks like we are ready to vote. And so, Ms. Cabrelska? We need a, we need a microphone, hold on.
Is there a parcel ID, or something to specify what we're voting for? Any, any kind of ID?
Good, good point.
Map block, anything?
You may know, Mr. Turgeon, but I guess we don't know what this particular parcel is. Is it not defined yet by assessors, or?
It's defined in the permit with a map reference, a dated map reference in the permit, and.
Okay, all right, so that's.
I don't have, I don't have the map with me.
Okay. All right, Mr. Stonefield. All right, that one has been recognized and seconded. Motion to move the question, cut off debate. All those in favor of moving the question, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Questions moved. The question's before you is, those in favor of the motion on Article 26, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no.
No.
The noes have it. Now, I'm going to ask for a quick straw poll on the budget. Chief? As long as you're not moving to dissolve.
No, I apologize, I know it's getting late, and we're all tired, but as we're going on, I believe something was missed in Article 8, which was a capital reserve account. I believe the capital planning committee approved the replacement of a paramedic intercept vehicle for $66,380. I also believe the board of selectmen approved this, and it was missing in the warrant. We just wanted to clarify and correct the situation while we could, if possible.
Ah, boy, that could be a problem. Yeah, if it's not in the article, and it wasn't in the motion, I don't even think we can reconsider it, chief. It might be something you'd have to bring up at the, at the fall, I think. I mean, was, was it submitted, and it just didn't make it into the article, or? I, I think the better course is probably to wait till the fall, because it could be, it's a close question whether or not that would fall within the scope of the article to add something else to it that wasn't in the article. I think I'd rather wait till the fall to vote on that. If you can wait that long. Well, unfortunately, I think we have a problem there. Mr. Kreidler.
Mr. Moderator, where the motion said to approve the capital planning committee's adopted capital plan for fiscal '19, and then it omitted one thing that was approved by that plan? Is it, does that give us wiggle room enough to get back in? Because the motion did say to approve the plan. So, if, in fact, the vehicle the chief is talking about was part of the approved plan, and his funding source is going to be, what was the funding source, chief? Ambulance receipts? Do we have?
Well, I, I think, I think you could do a motion to reconsider, to add that to it. It's not in the article. I, I guess, the concern I have is that because it's not in the article, does it fail the issue that the article has to, there's a scope with the article, and if you change the article, then it's not falling within the scope of the article by adding something to it. The issue here is whether or not this is significant enough to add this to this article, that it falls outside the scope. And I could go either way if we do a motion to reconsider, if the meeting wishes to reconsider. So, make a motion to reconsider. Chief? Oh, we can't. All right, is there a motion to reconsider Article 8? Kelly, Ms. Kelly.
I make a motion to reconsider Article 8.
Okay, motion's been made, seconded to reconsider Article 8. Requires just a majority vote right now. All those in favor of reconsidering Article 8, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no.
No.
Point of order? You want to go through that exercise now? I guess we'll have to. All right, call out the counters. We probably won't be by the time the count is made. Oh, yeah, who, who's your, oh, is that Herrick?
4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, 24, 25, 26, 27, 28, 29, 30, 31, 32, 33, 34, 35, 36, 37, 38, 39, 40, 41, 42, 43, 44, 45, 46, 47, 48, 49, 50, 51, 52, 53, 54, 55, 56, 57, 58, 59, 60, 61, 62, 63, 64, 65, 66, 67, 68, 69, 70, 71, 72, 73, 74, 75, 76, 77, 78, 79, 80, 81, 82, 83, 84, 85, 86, 87, 88, 89, 90, 91, 92, 93, 94, 95, 96, 97, 98, 99, 100.
Yeah, it probably would.
Um, yeah, it probably would. Well, just, yeah, motion to reconsider, yeah. Right, right. Unnecessarily prolong things another 10 minutes. How many guys?
Did you, you count the, did you count the table here? Okay. All right, the, the count is 68 people in attendance, so we no longer have a quorum. Uh, I think since the, um, I believe we can, since we have completed the business of the town meeting, um, we can dissolve without reconsidering Article, um, 8. And we can do a straw poll nonetheless. Those in favor of, um, a condensed, short budget, please say aye.
Aye.
Those in favor of a, the, the line-by-line budget, please say aye.
Aye.
Those in favor of something else completely different, say aye.
Aye.
All right.
Mr. Moderator?
I, I think the selectmen can try to take that, uh, for what it's worth. At this point, and since we're without a quorum, we have no further business. And Ms. King?
What's that?
Did you want to say?
Yeah, I just want to say, you know, what, what we really like is to, to give the, the town the option at, at the meeting when we're giving, like I said, when I made my comments when we were talking about the budget, that giving the multiple versions, it's not, there's not a multiple version. The numbers are the same, but every, the reason that it's like it is is so that everybody has a choice to read what they, they want.
Okay, all right.
And go through the detail if they want it. You have all the information in front of you, you just have to decide which one you're going to follow.
Okay, all right. All right, is the motion dissolved, present? Ms. Hill? So, motion second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The supposed meeting is dissolved. Thank you, everybody, for hanging in there. And thank you to the young man, the young men, I should say, that were helping with the microphones.
Well, that sort of turned into a basket case there at the end.
It's good. So it's going to be one that's going to go off to where else?
Something that's not terribly significant.
Yeah.
That's good.
Yeah.
That's a win.
Yeah, 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 nothing, nothing very-
Something that you need to keep the lights on.